Good morning and welcome to the Landmarks Preservation Commission's Public Hearing and Public Meeting of today, May 13th, 2025. We'll begin this morning by calling the role, and I'll ask our General Counsel Mark Silverman to call the role.
Chair Carroll?
Here.
Vice Chair Bland?
Here.
Commissioner Chapin?
Here.
Commissioner Chen?
Yeah.
Commissioner Chu?
Here.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Here.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Here.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Here.
Commissioner Lutfi? Commissioner Master?
Here.
We'll just note that Commissioner Jefferson is here as well. All right, so, welcome again to our public hearing and public meeting of May 13th, 2025. We are going to begin this morning with a public meeting agenda to review applications that have officially had a public hearing. Items number one and two on the public meeting agenda were read into the record on May 6 and are being presented today for the first time, so we'll open up the hearing for those two items. And item number three is an amendment to a previous certificate of appropriateness. And then we will move to our public hearing agenda to review new applications for work on designated properties. And this meeting is being held in our hearing room on the second floor of 253 Broadway. It is also being held via Zoom and livestreamed on our YouTube channel for anyone who would like to watch the proceedings. And with that, I will turn it over to our Director of Preservation, Corey Harala.
Thanks, Sarah, and good morning, everyone. Start today's Preservation Department Agenda with public meeting item number one, LPC 25-05785, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Brooklyn, Block 1947, Lot 23, 300 Lafayette Avenue in the Clinton Hill Historic District. This is an Italianate-style house built circa 1873, and the application is to legalize repaving the front areaway without LPC permits and construct a rear yard addition. This was read into the record at the public hearing of May 6, 2025. However, it was not presented, and no public testimony was taken at that time. The applicants will present the proposal after we open the proceedings.
Okay, and we'll do that right now. Commissioner Chu, would you make a motion to open the hearing? Thank you. Commissioner Master, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, you may begin.
Name is Larissa Jimenez.
Just speak up a little bit.
Sure, sure. Just presenting on behalf of the fellow a bit. There we go, okay. So, we are working at 300 Lafayette Avenue, and
Afraid you have to really project.
Is that better? Yeah, okay, great. Dream a bit. Great. So, as I mentioned, we are working at 300 Lafayette Avenue, and the proposed scope is mostly an interior renovation and a two-story addition on the rear facade. There is currently an extension at the rear that we would be removing along with a addition on the top floor, sort of a little enclosed balcony. So, all of that would be removed, and we would add a two-story addition at the basement and first floor. So, these are images of showing the existing front facade and areaway, and the tax photo, our property survey, and just a location map. The front facade, we are proposing to restore the front facade and replace all of the front windows. We also would like to keep the existing areaway paving if possible, and I know that is a question. We have just included some previous photos from 2012, 2016, 2017, and a current photo of the front areaway, and some close-up views of the existing paving, and a plan for reference. And then these are just some neighboring properties with their different areaway and paving for context. We've prepared just a block plan showing all of the existing extensions, and our proposed extension shown in red, just relative to all of those. And then an aerial view of those extensions compared to our property in red. And these are just some photos of the existing conditions at the rear yards. We had actually gotten access to the Pratt Building and were able to take some photos from the roof there, looking down at the backyards, and you can see our property is just highlighted in red. And on the left, you can see the existing conditions with the one-story extension and that sort of upper enclosed balcony that we are proposing to remove. And on the right is just a 3D view of the proposed two-story extension with a deck, an open deck, proposed for the first floor with stairs down to the backyard, and at the top of the extension would be another roof terrace. These are just sections showing the existing conditions with the rear, existing rear extension, and the proposed addition in red. And this is a, just for context, a view of the rear elevation, showing that existing extension with some photos at the basement and then up at the top floor as well. And in our proposed view, we are just showing the railings, all of the proposed new windows and doors, and the deck that would extend off of that two-story extension, along with the materials proposed. These are just plans showing the existing conditions on the left, and then the two, you know, lower stories on the right that are proposed. So, the new extension at the basement and the first floor level with the deck at the first floor, and just the neighboring buildings dashed in for context. And these are the upper floors, just showing that extension at the top floor to be removed, and the view down to the deck on top of the two-story extension.
All right, thank you very much. So, Commissioners, this is a proposal to legalize paving in the areaway that was installed without permits at some point in the past. It's, I think, a Belgian block or cobblestone-type paving, and the applicant has shown a variety of other paving materials in the row. And then the proposal for the two-story rear yard addition at the back. Are there any questions for this, on this one? Vice Chair Bland, followed by Commissioner Ginsburg.
Just to clarify, it was not you or your client who installed the Belgian block in the front, some prior owner?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
It's Commissioner Ginsburg.
The depth of your additions seems slightly deeper than the adjacent addition. What is the difference, and is there a reason why you can't align with that adjacent addition?
Sure. So, the clients wanted to sort of max out their FAR as much as possible within, you know, the limits allowed. So, that was sort of splitting that square footage on two levels. We could, you know, pull back a bit. It's about a foot and a half, two feet.
Well, can you just explain what the difference is and what the larger context is? Because it may be that it fits within the larger context. That's the information we need.
Sure. It was really just to accommodate all of the program.
Want to go back to the block plan?
Okay, yeah, so here you can see
Yeah, no, go to the block plan.
Okay. Great. So, we were really, it was based on the square footage that the owner was trying to achieve in the addition, but the alignment, we've actually aligned with the neighbor, which is number 15. It's the first house next to Pratt. So, we pulled back to that extension in the hopes that, you know, that relationship would help. It's a little bit less than, you know, our max FAR, but the owners were happy to do that.
Okay, but can you tell us how deep you project and how much further from the adjacent rear yard additions that is?
Sure. So, we are at about 13 foot four, and the neighbors, I believe, are about 11 feet.
About two, almost two and a half feet.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any other questions. We'll move to public testimony, and we'll come back to you. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I will turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Anyone join us via Zoom who would like to offer testimony? Please use the raise hand function. Seeing none, I will note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Two recommends approval on the condition that the rear yard extension should be reduced in height to one story and in depth to align with 298 Lafayette's extension, and the window configuration on the first floor should match the second floor. Citizens for Responsible Neighborhood Planning of Clinton Hill and Fort Greene recommends denial as presented, noting the same request as Community Board Two. And Society for Clinton Hill recommends denial as presented, noting the same request as Community Board Two.
The testimony is suggesting that you should align with the immediate neighbors, and so I think that's the question that we had here at the table. So, this is your opportunity to persuade us if those extra two and a half feet fit within the larger context, or if you'd like to respond to that. The community board also talked about one story and window, the window configuration, if you'd like to address those as well.
So, I think I'll just talk to the single story versus the second story. I think, based on the other extensions that exist on this block, there are other examples and precedent for a two-story extension, and this is, you know, going to be, the proposed plan is to have it as a two-family with a garden apartment. So, having the extension at the first floor is really for that second unit, and really is advantageous to that second upper triplex. So, we would really want to, you know, hold on to the two-story addition and not reduce to a single story, as it would affect the living space of that second unit. And then for the rear facade, we did update or amend the design based on those comments. So, we did sort of align the basement floor windows and the door. Previously, it was a set of sliding doors to the right and then a window to the left. So, we tried to match the configuration of the first floor a bit more, but we're open to, you know, revising that further if it helps, you know, address those concerns. And then in terms of the depth of the extension, we understand the concern with aligning with the neighbors. We would really, you know, the space and the program that's designed within these spaces of the extension are pretty tight, so the client really wanted to just hold on to that 13-foot dimension. There's bedrooms planned for the basement level that become very tight, and then again, the upper level layout gets pinched a bit, so.
Commissioners, any final questions on this one? Yes, Vice Chair Bland?
What's the depth of the lot?
The entire lot. Hundred.
And the remaining rear yard that you have?
So, we are to the building, it's about 35 feet, and the deck, you know, the open deck extends into that.
Okay, so with the addition, you still have a 35-foot rear yard that the deck will extend into. Okay. All right, any other final questions? All right, let's move to our discussion. Commissioner Jefferson, would you make a motion to close the hearing? Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so this is a proposal for a two-story rear yard addition and to legalize the areaway paving, and as I mentioned before, the applicant has shown that there is a variety of different paving material, modern paving materials within this row. And at the back, we've seen in the context that there are a couple of other two-story rear yard additions, and that they are aligning with the depth of an addition further down the same side of the street, but will project about two feet beyond their neighbors. And when we have looked at proposals for rear yard additions where the majority of the additions are one-story, but there are a couple of two-stories, we have found two-stories to be appropriate in that it doesn't overwhelm the building to which it's being added. So, I think that's one way to think about it, is in terms of its height, but also we'll think about it in terms of its depth and the overall context. And we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you like to start this one?
Yes, okay. So, I think the pavers are fine. I think the two-story height is fine, and I'm not, I'm going to be curious what the other commissioners say about the depth and whether we should pull it back to align with the neighbor, or given that there are addition, other additions in the block that are as deep as this, if that's all right. So, I'm torn and look forward to hear what my other commissioners think.
Okay. Commissioner Chen?
I'm the same. Aye. And on the other side, you have the other extension.
All right, Vice Chair Bland?
Not torn at all. I think I can support this as presented. I think the rear yard is not intruded, and pushing it back two feet is not going to change much at all in terms of the perception of the donut, so I'm fine with it as it is, and a two-story addition is appropriate.
Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, I agree with the other commissioners about the areaway and the height of the building, and I agree with Commissioner Bland about the, you know, extent of the, the extent to which it goes into the backyard, because of the length of the backyard in general, and the fact that the, actually, the other additions next to it are one-story. So, if it were a two-story and full width, I think it would look very odd, but I think in the context that it's okay in the context.
Okay. Commissioner Lutfi?
Yeah. I'm fine with the areaway paving, and in terms of the addition, I think I would tend toward Commissioner Bland's thoughts on this. First of all, there is a, still a large portion of the rear yard still there, 35 feet, I believe. It's only an additional two feet, just nothing. The client has been open to listening to comments in terms of aligning their windows at the base, which I think is important. There are two, there are other two-story additions within the donut, even if they're not right next door, so I don't, I don't think this is going to be very, is going to be overwhelming in any way. And there was one more thing that I thought was appropriate about it, but I think I've said enough.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chu?
In terms of paving, I agree that what they have is appropriate. In terms of the rear yard addition, I feel like, by fellow commissioners, that the height is appropriate. I think the depth is also appropriate, considering the context. I think the desire to align it with the neighboring is because of the single-story, 11-foot addition, but if that, or the single story, I think that was an addition as well. If that had some significance to the designation, I would feel more inclined to keep it aligned, but it is an insignificant one-story addition.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, Sarah, one more thing. There's no visibility.
There's no visibility, and no significant features are being
Oh, can I, one more comment. On the rear elevation, the center, I believe it's a door on the third floor, seems to be missing a lintel. I would request the applicant have a lintel so that the three windows, or the window, the door, and the window have that same expression.
Okay. Commissioner Master?
I'll pass on this one for now. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Jefferson?
Can accept the paving.
Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree, I think it's appropriate, I says.
Okay, so I think we have enough to support it. Are you comfortable with that, Commissioner Ginsburg? Great, thanks.
With regards to LPC 25-05785, 300 Lafayette Avenue, Clinton Hill Historic District, an Italianate-style house built circa 1873, application is to legalize repaving in the front areaway without landmark preservation permits and construction of a rear yard addition. I note that the building's style, scale, material, and details among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Clinton Hill Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work has not and will not eliminate or damage any significant architectural features, that while granite block pavers were not historically used for areaway paving, they are historic paving material which replaced modern concrete paving in this areaway, that the paving is partially screened by an existing areaway wall, neutral in finish, within a streetscape with a variety of areaway paving treatments, and has a subordinate harmonious presence, that the proposed work at the rear of the building will not be visible from any public thoroughfare, that the proposed rear yard addition will not rise to the full height of the building, thereby retaining a sense of the building's original scale and massing, that the rear yard addition will be in keeping with other rear yard additions within the block in terms of height and projections into the rear yard, that the rear yard addition and deck will be simple in design and form and typical in terms of solid-to-void ratio, materials and finishes, and the work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the Clinton Hill District.
You and Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Okay.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Mr. Chapin?
Aye.
Mr. Chen?
Aye.
Mr. Chu?
Aye.
Mr. Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Geez, I think abstaining.
Yep, with nine in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved, thank you. We'll move to the next item.
The next item is public meeting item number two, LPC 25-08411, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Brooklyn, Block 1242, Lot 47, 956 Park Place in the Crown Heights North Historic District Two. This is a Romanesque Revival-style rowhouse designed by Axel S. Hedman and built circa 1897, and the application is to remove a bay window and construct a rear yard addition. This was read into the record at the public hearing of May 6, 2025. However, it was not presented at that time, and no public testimony was taken. The applicants will present the proposal after we open the proceedings.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you make a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, you may begin.
My name is Jeff Edelamaki, I'm an architect. I'm representing the co-owners of the Park Place. My clients occupy the lower two floors, and their co-owner, friend occupies the top floor. The property is located in the Crown Heights North Two Historic, Park Place between Brooklyn. Rear of the, that's back at the existing, which is the removal of a tension totaling six feet six from the rear elevation. Off are photos of the adjacent properties along the Greenway. One identical height to the left, and then opposite, sorry, at that left end of the block, it is a larger right, the immediate, property immediately adjacent to the right has a temporary addition does the second property down. Photos at the lower part of the page are views from the property looking across the Greenway, and to the immediate right on the far-right photograph is the middle of that photo is a newly constructed So, the portion of the building that we are proposing to remove is shown in the middle photos, a two-story bay window that is not original. Far left showing that it was removed and replaced. The bay window originally occupied the second floor, and it was a foundation installed to construct a two-story bay window in the footprint of the existing original. Fan-morned map on the lower right shows, the far-left property is 954 Park Place, which is immediately adjacent to 56. Doors down, there was a building with a very similar footprint to the rear of the building, but there is a little bit of a mix of the immediately adjacent properties as far as the original construction. Back to the top shows the, of this donut, where the right eastern half old mix of two and three-story rowhouses. West side consists of the bilingual pool, northwest and the southwest. Photographs at the lower right show the visibility from both Sterling Place and New York Avenue. The lower-right photos show the view, seasonal view in the winter from the courtyard of the area accessway for the newly constructed residential building, showing that the property is visible. The, the view from Sterling is conclusive, but the property, the side of the existing L is visible. Basement level, ground level floor plan, showing on the left the existing condition, the non-historical bay window footprint. Right, the closed extension, total six feet from the L, existing L. On the upper floor, overhang for a balcony, it is six feet six inches, and the red line, the red dotted line section from the L. So, it is a fairly modest So it is a fairly modest proposal as far as extensions into the backyard. We do have a larger-than-normal rear yard. It's a 120-foot lot. So the objectives for this renovation are fairly modest, just to improve. The upper floor is a kitchen, creating a larger eating area. And then back to the lower floor bedroom and the standard footprint is meant to accommodate a bed, which is now so aside from the objective programmatic needs, the two trees you see indicated here, one on the lower left, a smaller tree, and the one on the upper right. Those trees were both planted at the time of their children's births. The older one just left for college. The younger one will be so they are, we are designing around the trees, especially the one most immediate to the building, to maintain growing. And we have consulted with optimists and we have a fairly sophisticated structural foundation scheme to size risk to the tree root system. A side view of the L extension on the left showing the original condition and on the right, the new condition. Both floors extend out three feet from the existing L at two stories. The lower floor extends out another three feet. And then the balcony at the second level extends out three and a half feet for a total of six feet six inches from. Rear elevation, again, showing the adjacent properties. Oracle renovation to the right. Action and three diagram showing the bulk extension. Photocallage showing the text and those conditions on the left. More rendering showing the material palette, which consists of possible to the existing combination of metal and wood painted. We originally had proposed wood cladding for the extension. Based on feedback from the community board, we agreed to brick to make it more architectural, both to the existing building and to the properties. Another just detail is the tension is stepped in in width from the existing L just to create a dovetail in the new brick cleanly without seeing a kind of staggered seam between old and new. And along the top, we are proposing to continue the cast iron cornice around our proposed extension.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have questions on this one? Any? Yeah, Commissioner Chapin?
The contemporary addition that was referenced that's adjacent, was that approved by the commissioner? Or is that a curious?
The addition that we see in photograph C?
Yeah.
Or and
Just curious, is that was approved?
On the adjacent building, is that what you're asking?
The one in C. Referred to as a contemporary addition, which it is obviously. And I was curious as to whether the commission had approved it or not.
I think
Sure, which? I don't see a contemporary addition. Maybe it was a different slide.
It's the buff-colored one with the little bay, white bay window. Photo C.
We don't know. Okay, that's fine.
I'm not sure, but I mean, it could be that something like that could qualify for staff-level reviews.
That's what I was wondering for you, if that could be approved at staff level.
Lower on the facade and it's not something we consider an addition. It's just a type of window and it's not visible from a public thoroughfare. Exactly a lot of flexibility for things like that.
So, I mean, there was no bay there to begin with or anything. Okay, thanks. I'm just curious.
I think, you know, the staff level rules are intentionally quite flexible for rear facades, especially at the lower portion of the building. So there are a variety of things that are often approved at staff level at the back.
All right. Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Lutfi?
Could you please, if possible, give us a little more detail on the dates of these and, you know, the bay window situation? I'm a little confused about it. Like, again, I think originally there was one on the second floor. Could you just take us through it again so we can understand from a timetable standpoint how long each has been there or not been there, whatever?
So these photos are from around 22 years ago. There are other photos showing not 100% clearly, but clearly enough to indicate that bay window was only at the second floor and not the lower floor. And this upper-left photo indicates a new put in, part of that reconstruction. And the photos are from 22 years ago. As to the adjacent properties, I'm not sure. These photos on the lower left, you do see to the right that whatever happened next door was there at that time?
All right, so 22 years ago, it could be original to the building. Is that correct?
Well, it looks like in the 1908 Sandborne map that this building had a bay window off of the L as did the building at 962. And then other buildings in the row had it on the main facade, not on the L. So it seems that a bay window is a feature that was found in the row, although in different places, it's not a consistent pattern. But I think the sense is that it was just a one-story Oriole-type bay. And then 20 years ago, they reconstructed it to make it two stories. So it looks in that photograph like maybe the cornice is the remaining original fabric.
Oh. So it was just the upper floor that was popped out and the bottom was recessed?
Yeah. That's, that's
Typical.
Typical, yeah. And I think, so do you know if at 962, that if their bay window still exists? I think I saw it in the photo of the row. Oh, well, it looks like it's there and sort of modified. It is two stories as well. Yeah, you can sort of, actually, if you go back, actually go back two slides to that photo again of the rear, one more. So if you look at the deck in photo A, you could see a parlor floor bay on that building. But you can see, now if you go forward one photo, you can see that in the photo that was taken 20 years ago, that does appear everything was reconstructed under the cornice. Yeah. So, right, having, the fact that there's a window means that probably that lower level was not original.
And would that have been in our landmark records, that job of 20-some years ago?
I think it depends on when this district was designated, and I don't think it was designated that long ago. I don't think it was 20 years ago. I think it might have been more like in the 10-year.
And then could we see the whole block plan? Thank you.
Yeah, this was designated in 2011, 2011. Any other questions? Let's move to public testimony. And I think there's no one in the room to speak on this item, so I'm going to turn it over to Stephen to take us through any remote participants we have.
Anyone joining us via Zoom who would like to speak, please use the raise hand function. Our first speaker will be Christina Conroy. Christina, I'll be promoting you to panelist, after which we ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you all have three minutes to speak.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy, Victorian Society, New York. Now, when we began our review, we were disappointed to find the presentation lacked basic information concerning the recent reconstruction of the bay window the applicant now proposes to remove. But we were interested to see that it did include part of the 1908 Sandborne map, which shows rear-facing bay windows at number 956 and five of its immediate neighbors. And we noted that there were three identical rear-facing bay windows visible in the photos poses facing Sterling Place on the other side of the rear donut. We wondered why there were so many identical bay windows on this block, so we looked at the Crown Heights 2 designation report. It turns out that every house on this block, a total of 37, facing Park Place, Sterling Place and Brooklyn Avenue, were built by architect Axel Hedman for Charles Reynolds between 1897 and 1903. It appears that 19 of the Hedman Reynolds houses on the block retain their historic bay windows. We believe that the rear-facing bay windows constitute a significant refining feature of this block. They must be retained. Although this bay was recently reconstructed, it apparently retains its historic cornice, window openings, details and footprints. We strongly recommend this proposal to remove the bay window and extend the rear LB. Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Kaylee Johnson.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Kaylee Johnson. I'll be speaking on behalf of the Historic District's Council. HTC finds the proposed removal of the historic bay window on this building's rear facade to be inappropriate. The rear facades of this row of townhouses features a very deliberate and designed-repeating pattern of additions and Oriole windows. Removal of an Oriole and expansion of an addition will interrupt this important architectural feature. Thank you.
Anyone else join us via Zoom who would like to speak, please use the raise hand function. All right, seeing none, I will note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board 8 recommends approval.
All right, thank you. Would you like to respond to any of the comments we've heard? All right, Commissioners, any final questions on this one? Our discussion. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so this is a proposal to remove this bay that we've just, we've gone through the history of it. It has been reconstructed, but does retain its footprint at the second floor and its cornice. And to extend the L out further at the second floor, no further than the existing bay and three feet further at the ground floor. And we'll begin, and there is some obscured seasonal visibility through the block. So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Chu, would you like to start this one?
Sure.
Interesting situation. I think that looking at the condition of the current block and the significance of this defining feature of this projected element that looks like it was original, at least in the parlor level, upper floor. I feel like because it's such a strong characteristic of this block, that I feel that it needs to be retained. At least that its form, we know the materials have been rebuilt. It looks like the cornice might actually be original. So I really feel that should stay. I think that the client, and I want to say that the design that the client has put forward is a handsome, modern design, which would be totally appropriate in many other situations. But because of this unique form that we're seeing in many of the existing rears of this block, I do feel that we need to protect that shape. And the cornice, the original material. So for me, it is understood that I guess most of these were only on the upper parlor level. I think that it, I'd be open to keeping its double-two-story form or, but the top needs to stay essentially. I do feel that it would be a bit awkward to increase or alter the lower floor though and have this form only on the parlor level. I think that would feel odd, especially since the original condition was that there was a projected element above with a recess below. It feels strange to flip that around. At the lower level, that's been allowed, and that might also be due to minimal visibility, which I would say this is also minimally visible from certain views, but definitely from all the yards, you can see the parlor level. So I would say that have to keep the parlor level form and existing cornice.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Master?
Yeah, in general, I agree with Commissioner Chu. I think that this addition is fairly modest in terms of, you know, coming out only three feet beyond the L. And I do think that in terms of the design, it's something that we typically do approve, especially since the rear addition is minimally visible. However, it seems like the bay is a prominent feature in this little green space and in this neighborhood. So I agree that in some form, the second, the parlor level should be retained. And then on the first floor, I think that the applicant can certainly do an extension as presented.
You, Commissioner Jefferson?
Looking at this last night, I was totally did not know the history of the bay window. Half of that, half of the bay windows are gone now. A difficult one for me, but what they have done is simple and acceptable.
Okay. Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree with Stephen. I think the bay window should stay on the parlor floor.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
I agree the bay should stay. If we look to the left, the porch terrace on the building next to it is pretty awkward. And I think the addition on the first floor, it may need to be modified a little bit to work better with the bay, but is fine.
Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I agree with
Commissioner Bland?
Counting votes, a minority report. Minimally visible. Much altered in the back, consistent row from its original. This one rebuilt. And finally, design does matter, I think. And this is a very handsome change. And this is a very handsome change, and so I can accept it as is, but I think I'm alone.
All right. Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, I agree about the design with both Commissioner Master and Commissioner Bland. However, in this particular instance, the fact that bays, I guess, just the single-floor bay, you suggested, Commissioner, Eric Carroll, but have existed here since the 1900, and on the entire block, there still are several bays remaining in the rear. I just feel that this feature is extremely important and that what we've sometimes allowed contemporary versions of the bays, this is insufficiently referential, I think, in this situation, where you've got really what looks like, you know, pretty, and they may not be original. We'd have to have some study done, but there definitely are a number of bays, two-story bays, that create a sense that this was a context, and this context continues for well over 100 years. So I feel I would have to vote against this if it were at this point.
Okay. Commissioner Lutfi?
So, although, Brad, I'm with you in spirit.
Yes or no?
I have to say that, and it is a nice design, I mean, it is, but I have to say the fact that this is a historical feature, it's repeating, and it's been retained. I think that is a very, very important thing for us to keep in mind here. And I really appreciate that the homeowners in this area feel that way. And in fact, when this was rebuilt, on some level, so did the owner, because the owner retained the cornice. So I have to go along with the idea that, that it should be retained. And I do believe that there can be an extension of the floor, but can't really be what it is. It has to be modified in some way and working with staff. And even though it might be awkward, I'm sure something appropriate can be worked out.
Okay, great. So I think what we can do is make a motion to approve it with modifications, that they retain the bay at the second floor and they work with the staff on a one-story extension.
Okay. In the case of LPC 2508411956 Park Place, Crown Heights, North Historic District Two, a Romanesque revival-style row house designed by Axel Hedman and built in 1897, application is to remove a bay window and construct a rear yard addition. I know that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of Crown Heights, North Historic District Two. I recommend approval with modifications. Finding that the proposed rear yard addition will only be minimally visible through a gap in the street wall along Sterling Place, that the size and simple massing of the addition, which will be an extension of the existing partial with L, will not overwhelm the building or row, that the modest projection of the addition beyond the existing L will not diminish the central green space, and that the design and materiality of the addition featuring brick cladding, black finish metal panels, and multi-light metal window assemblies and black finish picket railing will be in keeping with the residential character of the building and row. However, I find that the complete removal of the bay will eliminate significant architectural feature and diminish the unity of the row, which features other historic, remaining historic bay windows. Therefore, we recommend that the bay form and historic cornice be retained at the parlor level and that the ground floor be revised to work with the retained upper volume and work with staff on the design.
Thank you. And Commissioner Master, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Eric Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Nay.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Mr. Ginsburg?
Aye.
Mr. Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Nay.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Your master?
Aye.
With eight in favor and none opposed, and two opposed, the motion passes.
Okay. All right, thanks. That's approved with the modifications and just continue to work with the staff, and we'll move to the next public meeting item.
Next item is public meeting item number three, LPC 25-09502, an application for an amendment in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 1832, Lot 29, 361 Central Park West, AKA 1 to 5 West 96th Street, First Church of Christ Scientist of New York City Individual Landmark. This is a Bozar Classical Style church building designed by Carrer and Hastings and built in 1899 to 1903. The application is to amend certificate of appropriateness, 25-04870, issued on December 27, 2024, to construct taller railings at the roof terrace. The applicants will present the proposal after we open the proceedings.
We have to open the proceedings. So Commissioner Lutfi, would you make a motion to open the proceedings?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Chu, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Good morning, you may begin.
Okay, good morning. Misha Hunter, Lee Saltzman Architects. This is my first time in your new hearing room, so it's very exciting. Congratulations. I am representing with my colleague Steve Milkie of FX Collaborative, and Diva, who is representing the Children's Museum of Manhattan, for this request for a modification at the terrace guardrails. You may recall seeing this project come before the commission literally five years ago, when the overall request before the commission came to adaptively repurpose or adaptively use the building, which had been for over a century the home of the First Church of Christ Scientist. And it went through a few hands before coming to C-Mom, but C-Mom is going to be this very happy steward of the building. And so the commission approved some modifications to the building as well as future, there was another change in terms of the raising of the monitor roof, so we came back. And now, a few years later, looking a little bit more closely at one particular aspect of the design, and this aspect was the terrace railing. As you may see, pointed out to you, but what we're going to be talking about today is literally this terrace railing here, which is about 80 feet above the grade level. And the commission had previously approved glass railing at four-foot height at that location, as well as glass here in the center, in front of the steeple, parallel to Central Park West. And there were some concerns, both in terms of the height and the materiality of that previously approved railing, and particularly with regards to the safety of children. The primary user group for this new building, or this adaptively used building, excuse me, will be children and their caregivers. And so the safety of children is of very, very high concern. And so the decision was to come back and ask for a revision in terms of the materiality and the height of the railing. And so the previously approved four-foot railing is now being proposed at four-foot height. The previously approved glass railing is being proposed in a metal mesh, a Jacob webnet, with very minimal metal railing. And so we'll go through the design, but just wanting to give you sort of the high-level summary. And we will also be talking about just how, you know, this railing relates to the overall height of the building. It will go through some views of the mock-up and the visibility. I've seen it, and I can tell you that this building is just such a monumental building that when you're looking 80 feet into the air, very, very minimal, lightly-designed extension that really promotes the adaptive use of the building. It really is not a very visually obtrusive element overall on the building. The other thing, too, is that, you know, just from the visitor experience, we're really hopeful that, you know, when people are able to use this terrace, there's going to be more of a sense of, you know, the experience of the breeze, sense of nature, because really when you're looking from either Central Park West or from Central Park up to this space or from the terrace. Oh, good heavens. Okay, let me try again. Can you hear me now? Hopefully. Okay. The, we're hopeful that the children and their caregivers will experience some of the breeze and some of that sense of, you know, harmony with the nature that's around them. And then also, too, that because of the apertures of this mesh, we're very hopeful, of course, that this will allow the legibility of the historic landmark to still be possible through, through this mesh. This mesh has been approved by the commission at other individual landmarks, and thinking particularly of the Eldred Street synagogue and also the High Bridge. So this, this particular type of material and intervention is something that, you know, we're really being mindful of as far as the respect for an individual landmark. And in terms of the aperture size, that has been carefully tooled to make sure that it tries to reduce as much as possible the chance for children to get a toe hold or foothold. And again, just trying to promote the sense of the safety of the children. Okay, let's see here. Okay. And just to give you a sense, this is the outline, if you can see in green, the perimeter of what had been previously approved for the glass railing back in 2020. And if I can get it, the current proposed design in green, so you'll notice that the footprint is the same. The one significant change is that on the Central Park West facade at the center and centerlined with the steeple, there had been a glass railing at that location that, in the current configuration, has been proposed to be removed. This will be the FDNY access point in case of emergency. And what will be done is just to have the wire mesh placed just at a more recessed location from the facade. So again, that will be much less visually obtrusive. And just a comparison in terms of what the glass had been approved as, four-foot and glass, and then the proposed in the wire mesh at six feet. And again, the wire mesh framing will be integrated with bollards and light standards as well as the sound system. So there's very thoughtful attention to integrating all of these vertical elements to make sure that the design is as simple and respectful as possible. And you can also see the relationship of the proposed wire mesh to the balustrade, the historic balustrade that is existing and to remain. And I'll turn over to Steve Milkie from FX Collaborative to walk you through some of the details of the design. Thank you.
Is this going to be okay? Okay. I'm Steve Milkie with FX Collaborative. I'll walk you through the details of the design. So on this slide, we do have the previous proposed design of the four-foot glass guardrail, and then next to it, our current proposed design using the six-foot-high mesh guardrail. So we're proposing the same stainless steel bollard enclosure for the light and speaker system that's on the terrace, but introduced a stainless steel plate fin that will support the top and bottom rails that the mesh is strung over. So the mesh will be continuous from one end to the other. We aren't using, we aren't going to break it at the verticals, so that should allow a more seamless appearance. So at the front east side of the building, you'll remember in our previous design, we did introduce a four-foot glass railing at the balcony. In our current proposed design, we're proposing removing that and basically not having public access on that balcony. We are introducing a new stainless steel frame door within that opening to the tower, and this will be used exclusively for FDNY access to the terrace. Obviously, with a higher guardrail at six feet, that brings about some challenges in terms of FDNY getting over it, so we propose this solution instead. We do have some other unique conditions to resolve as we trace around that guardrail position with the higher location. So at the two corners adjacent to the tower itself, we have introduced kind of, again, a similar stainless steel plate that is designed similar to the posts that support the rails to kind of close off the kind of different gaps between the new guardrail and the kind of monumental stone of the tower itself. You'll see in upcoming mock-up views that, you know, these are set quite far back from the primary facade and not visible from the public way. So walking you through a couple elevations, so the previous design of four-foot glass guardrails, we had all of the bollards set below the stone balustrade, and we also had to think about the alignment of the bollards and the glass with respect to the glass insertions that we're making as part of the addition to the roof. You'll see in the new design, we are keeping that same intent, so the bollard that houses the light and the speaker remains below the stone balustrade and hidden behind the large solid elements with only the verticals coming up to support that top rail. And we also maintain the same alignments of the bollards with the new insertions of glass as part of the rooftop addition. So here is the front elevation, the main east elevation, previous design that showed the four-foot glass both on the north and south terraces and at the front balcony. And then our current proposed design that removes that glass guardrail from the front balcony for FDNY access and introduces the new six-foot mesh guardrails on the north and south terraces. Just a couple of bird's eye views to kind of show the overall design. Again, these not kind of taken visible from the public way, but just to give you an idea of the layout on the two, on the south terrace. And another one from above showing the same, again, post layout locations are the same that was for glass, they just now introduced the stainless steel fins and top rail. So here, just a couple of quick comparisons. So from the primary corner, southeast corner of Central Park West and 96th Street, the previous design of four-foot glass, and then the current proposed design of six-foot mesh. You can see the, you know, mesh and light stainless steel touch is quite deferential to the monumental stone of the building itself and especially the tower, allowing it to read through, and the verticals are kind of minimally visible. We do have some stainless steel mesh examples, so we used it at our design for the Statue of Liberty Museum. The mesh is also used at the High Line, and as Misha mentioned, not pictured here, it was also used at individual landmarks such as High Bridge. And then just to walk you through, again, some of the materials, I think most of you had a chance to view the samples, right? So it is a 316 stainless steel mesh produced by Jacob, and the proposed pipe rail is one inch outside diameter, so just slightly over like 1.3 inches actual outside diameter. So keeping that as narrow. so keeping that as narrow as possible. So then we also did have a mock-up constructed, which is available for view. So we built a portion of it on the south terrace, majority of it on the east side with the return onto the south. So this is the proposed view from 96th and Central Park West on the southeast corner. Further from, further down 96th Street, or Central Park West, south of 96th Street. And then on Central Park West, a little north of 96th Street, you can see it there in the upper left-hand corner. Finally, the primary east elevation. Thankful, it was still a little cold out when I took these photos, so you can see it through the tree that doesn't have any leaves on it yet. Have since gone through and took visibility studies through all the same views that we did at the previous presentation from back in 2020, if needed.
Thank you very much. All right, do we have any questions on this one? Yes, Commissioner Chapin.
Could you set the fence back on the front facade so that it would not be visible from across the street?
Yeah, the two plates that sit adjacent to the tower itself that are set back. This stainless steel metal plate here that is set back nearly four feet from the front facade. The guardrail itself, in order to kind of maximize area of usable terrace, is set back from the balustrade about six inches, just so it's not right up against it. The mesh, as it acts as a guardrail, does need some room to flex, right, but still resist the load requirements that we have to, that's designed as a guardrail. And basically, the intent is that the mesh is within the same plane as the glass that was previously approved.
Yes, I understand. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Goldblum.
Good questions. First of all, you chose to use a top rail. I've seen this, and I think when we did it at the High Bridge, it just had a cable at the top. It didn't have a railing. Is there a reason why you went for the top rail, which might be more visible than a cable?
Yes, actually, I think from the studies that we did, the top rail actually seems a little less visible. When you do use a cable at the top, it does, due to the tension induced into the wire mesh itself, tend to sag and kind of makes these u's or scallops. So having a clean, straight bar seemed less visible, more deferential of the landmark than having kind of the u's between.
Okay. And on guardrails of this height, I've seen them in the past where they angle at a certain height. Would that potentially reduce visibility?
We did not study that. It's something we could look at. The intent was to have as straight up and down of mesh as possible, again, to kind of maximize area. We are trying to keep the, say, width of that vertical stainless steel fin that supports the top rail as minimal as possible, and you can see that in some of the profile here. So we are looking to, right, notch that stainless steel plate, so we're trying to keep the attachment up at the top as minimal as possible to keep the bulk of the piece that supports the lights and the speakers below the stone balustrade level. I think tapering it would reduce in kind of a larger stainless steel plate, so we thought this would be the most visually unobtrusive.
Yeah, I think we've seen where they angle at the top for play, school play yards on top of school buildings, but I do think you need additional structure to support it at the first point and then again at the second point. Okay. Other questions? All right, let's see if we have public testimony. Oh, no, we don't. This is a public meeting item. This is an amendment. We did get a letter from Landmarks West, which was shared with the commissioners in advance of today. So I think we can just move to our discussion now. And this is, this individual landmark has, as Misha said, has two approvals from the commission for a couple of different adaptive reuse. And the first one was for residential, where we approved many more changes, and then that didn't work out, and then C-Mom was able to take over the space. And we were really excited to have C-Mom take over the space. It seemed like a great pairing, and the amount of changes that were required were a little bit lighter and less than were required for residential use. So this was, this seemed like a really suitable use for this building, and we were excited about it at the time. And we did approve glass railings to allow for the visitors, the children that visit, to have access to the roof. And so this is an application to amend that prior approval to do the mesh two feet taller than the glass railings that were previously approved. And, you know, just as a reminder, when we, you know, this building was, did not have a use for a long time, and I think adaptive reuse has a really important preservation tool to give a building a new life and new purpose. And so we have, as a commission, approved and have been very flexible about changes to accommodate the new use when we are looking at these kinds of applications. So that is just some context for our discussion. Commissioner Luttrell, would you like to start this one?
I just want to echo your sentiments that I'm so very excited about this project. It's a wonderful design. It's such an important cultural institution, and it's only going to be better. And the design was so well-thought-out and is, you know, I actually appreciate the fact that you've come back to us about this because you're addressing a very important issue, which is the safety of the children. And I could see from the design how someone could easily, like, kind of climb up and over for fun, and then it could be a disaster and no one could be around. So that's a good thing. Now, there, it's not like there hasn't been visibility with the original design. There is some visibility. And I don't think that the visibility is significantly greater, and I think that the end result is actually better in a lot of ways. One that I especially appreciate is that whoever is outside is going to feel like they're outside, because this is, you know, a permeable fence, thin, very thin fence that can let the air through. And I think that that's going to be a much better experience, in addition to the fact that it will be better in terms of birds not crashing into it, et cetera. But, so, I like the design. I don't think it needs to sort of go backwards. I do associate that with playgrounds. And it doesn't seem as appropriate. This seems much cleaner to me. I also, I like the use of the stainless steel plate, not only for safety, but even from a design standpoint, and I think the material and the texture that you're going to be and color make sense. So I can approve this.
Commissioner Chu.
Thank you. Yeah, and I think, I echo some of your thoughts, Jeannie. I think that what you had said earlier, Sarah, about revitalizing this building for this new use is fantastic. We want the building to feel like it has life. I do think it's a great opportunity to use a rooftop. Often, they're not used because of maintenance or security issues. And having designed these type of protections for upper levels on buildings for education, younger people, it is a big concern. I believe that the applicant has studied the width of the openings and all that to prevent climbing. I think that was my first concern. I think that the expression is very modern. It's, it is more minimal. I think the glass probably would have looked a little bit more obvious with reflection, although it may have been more consistent. Here, I do read the vertical supports more often. But because it is, the mesh is very transparent, it's clearly something that's been an intervention to this historic building. Not original, but it does add life, and I do think it's minimal and it is somewhat transparent. I can find this appropriate.
Okay. Commissioner Jeff, oh, sorry, Master.
Yeah, I agree with a lot of these comments. Adaptive reuse is so important, especially a building like this, that they can convert it into a children's museum, is incredible. I think that this mesh barrier is extremely important for safety concerns and so that this rooftop terrace can be utilized safely for the children. And I find that when you look at this from the street, it's really minimally visible, so I can find it appropriate.
Commissioner Jefferson.
It's carefully designed, I think, or something.
Commissioner Goldblum.
I agree. It's appropriate.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
I think raising the height of the railing is critical, particularly with children, and that this is a good solution, and I agree with my fellow commissioners, appropriate.
Commissioner Chen.
Vice Chair Bland.
Those of us who lived through the ups and the downs of this building are really happy, Sarah, that you gave a little bit of that history. Such an important building and such a difficult building, perhaps, to adaptively reuse, as we found out. But we found such a happy solution here now. I just want to also add one issue that I feel strongly about. You know, glass is often quite visible, particularly when it's seen against the sky. When it's seen against a building, it's less visible and, I think, less intrusive. So I'm sure I approved the glass before, because I was here approving things when this came before us, but I think this is a much better solution now. Not only safer, appropriately, as the client has clearly made manifest, but I think it's just a better and less visible intrusion, if you will call it that, but certainly an intrusion which is well within the boundaries of adaptively reusing this building for this particular use. So I think it's a big step forward.
Commissioner Chapin.
I agree with everything that's been said so far. My only feeling is that I would really prefer that it not be visible from the front facade. I do think it's a better solution, and I think it's fine on the rest of it. But, you know, I think it's unfortunate that it's visible from the front facade. Otherwise, I think everything that's been said is absolutely correct.
All right, I think we have enough to support it. Commissioner Luttrell. Sure. In the matter, oops, wait a minute. I picked up the wrong one. Okay. Here, I got it. Yeah, thanks. In the matter of docket 25-09502, 361 Central Park West, AKA 1-5 West 96th Street, First Church of Christ Scientist of New York City Individual Landmark. I note, oh, I note that the commissioners approved the installation of a four-foot-tall glass panel railing around the viewing platform and connecting to the tower under certificate of appropriateness 25-04870. I recommend approval finding that the proposed work will continue to facilitate the adaptive reuse of this historic church building as a children's museum. That the increased height of the railing to six feet will address safety concerns unique to a structure being adaptively reused for children. That the proposed metal war mesh is less reflective than glass, safer for birds, easier to maintain, and requires less wind-bracing supports. That the steel mesh with thin steel framing will be relatively transparent and neutral in finish. That the metal plate connections between the rectilinear framing and the classical detailing of the building are minimal and restricted to the periphery. That a stainless steel frame mesh gate added to the entry at the central balcony is required for FDNY access and will be recessed at the plane of the facade and only minimally visible. And that the previously approved railings at the center balcony will be omitted, resulting in less fencing around the tower. Thank you. Commissioner Chu, would you second that motion?
Second.
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Vice Chair Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Chu.
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Luttrell.
Aye.
Commissioner Master.
Aye.
Nine in favor, one opposed, the motion passes.
All right, so that's approved. Thank you very much. We'll move to the public hearing agenda now.
Okay, we'll start with public hearing item number one. LPC 25-09556, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, block 498, lot 1, 92 Prince Street in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. This is a commercial building designed by Allenbrook Bennettz Satchka Architects and built circa 2000 pursuant to certificate of appropriateness 001382. This is an application to reclad the building and install storefront infill signage and banners.
Hearing commissioners, my name is Jonathan Taylor with Higgins, Quaysbarth &amp; Partners. Preservation consultants, can volume, okay? Okay. I'm here with my colleague Ward Dennis, as well as architects Rosana Capurso and Marina Sasu and Andrea Sisti from Ferrari. I'll make the presentation, but they're available to maybe answer any questions you might have about the design or the program. 92 Prince Street is on the southeast corner of Mercer Street in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. It's a two-story commercial building that was approved by the commission in 1998. It was most recently occupied, as you can see, by Nespresso. It's vacant now. We're proposing a new facade for a new retail occupant, which is Ferrari. It will not be a car dealership, but it will be a boutique for Ferrari accessories and collectibles. A little bit of a previous history of the site, which has 26 feet of frontage on Prince Street and 101 feet on Mercer Street. In the early 20th century, there was a two-and-one-story building on this, on the lot. By the time of the 1940 tax photo, that had been demolished, and it remained a vacant site decades, except for there was a small, you can see the small one-story lumber shop at the south end of the lot in the 1980 tax photo. There were actually, oh, at the left on, in 1994, an approval for a six-story building. And on the right, you can see an elevation from the 1998 presentation that was approved for the existing building, which did include awnings with signage, which haven't been on the building for a while. So today, we were proposing to reclad this painted metal facade in a new metal cladding that features steel in two distinct finishes. The new facade maintains the overall organization of the building as a series of double-height storefronts in a regular rhythm of bays with varying planes of infill, a solid bulkhead and spandrel, and a profiled cornice. A signage proposed includes metal lettering and three banners located at the extreme ends of the building, as well as at the corner. Before looking at the details, I just want to discuss a little bit of the context that's relevant both to the proposal as well as to the existing building as it was approved. The building in context on Mercer Street, immediately south is the rear facade of a scholastic building, commission-approved building, and of course, a well-known contemporary reinterpretation of the district's architecture. And then next to that, to the south, is the rear facade of 555 Broadway. Many of the buildings on the east side of Mercer Street are, in fact, the rear facades of through-block Broadway buildings. This is one example, and I'll talk about that context a little bit more in a second. At the left is the west side of Mercer Street directly across from our building. And at the right, you can see the Prince Street facade of 92 Prince on its block context, which includes the Little Singer Building, two doors down, at 88. And one of the things that was noted in the approval in 1998 about the 92 Prince Building was its relationship to the lower- And one of the things that was noted in the approval in 1998 about the 92 Prince Building was its relationship to the lower floors of district buildings, a lot of which have two-story bases with a kind of somewhat monumental, two-story, double-height storefront infill with a horizontal division. So you can kind of see that relationship here on that block elevation. As I mentioned, the east side of Mercer Street, a lot of the storefronts are at the rears of Broadway buildings. The change of grade from Broadway to Mercer Street means that the storefronts are sort of double-height or one and a half times height. And that actual height gives them kind of a enhanced vertical, vertical reading, as you can see in these. Of course, the district is characterized by cast iron architecture. And cast iron architecture isn't just about cast iron, it's a metal and glass architecture. And it evolved over time to maximize transparency and openness to light. Daylighting was important not just to the manufacturing uses on the upper floors, but, but glazing at the street level was important for storefront displays of the resulting goods. And finely framed and often protruding storefronts could have created a, kind of a glazed street wall condition for passersby historically. Over the life of the historic district, the commission has approved a lot of buildings, a number of buildings that express these characteristics in a contemporary way, including smaller buildings that really maximize and celebrate that glassy element of the district's streetsgate. And of course, a lot of the districts approve new buildings, also feature contemporary reinterpretations of its historic metal facades. These are a few examples that, each of them in a different way, highlight aspects of metal as a material, as a building element, with sculptural qualities and finishes that really provide depth and texture. And so I think with our proposal, with relationship to these examples, you know, are the, the new designs a little bit lighter and glassier than the existing? And it also sort of highlights the depth and texture that can be achieved with, with metal facades in a, in a new way. So I think it's in keeping with these contemporary designs that the commission. A quick note about signage and banners. We're proposing three banners on a very long building as part of an overall quite minimal signage program. Banner signage is pretty common in the district, as you can see on the Mercer Street left. At the right is a Soho building of a sort of similar scale with multiple signs of multiple types for, for each of its multiple tenants. And so I think in comparison to what the commission, you know, might be entertaining for retail tenants, our proposal for the single occupancy of the building is actually a pretty minimal signage program. So looking closer at the proposal, this is the Prince Street facade with the main entrance. Again, it sort of maintains the concept of a double-height storefront framed in piers and a cornice with a recessed tripartite plane of infill in a, in a lighter metal than the outer structure and a horizontal that defines the mezzanine level. Facade signage is composed of chrome lettering in keeping with the metallic palette of the, of the design. None of the signage is illuminated, not even indirectly. The banner signs are vertically oriented and narrow, so with the limited projection that keeps them proportional to the size of the building. On Mercer Street. There's carried around. Each section of the building is divided by mullions into six windows rather than the current five, which sort of enhances the verticality of the composition a little bit in a way that I think is consistent with what I was pointing out about Mercer Street storefronts in general. The, the two-tone, I think this really goes, shows well that the two tones of the metal kind of help to break up the, maintains the solidity of the building, especially at the top, but it breaks up a little bit from the heaviness of the. And there's Ferrari lettering at the second floor centered on the facade. And again, it's, it's a long building and I think that the signage is pretty minimal, even considering the two banners that are 100 feet apart. And in fact, also you can see at the right, there's a banner that was approved by the commission. Corner view, see both the facades and all the elements. Also with respect to banners, I will say that the, our initial design did include banners at every pier and in response to comments from both the community board and consultation with staff. Obviously, the main feature of the proposal is the exterior metals. These consist of two different finishes of stainless steel, one that's patented at kind of a darker finish that weathers over time and, and as well as a lighter one that's textured for a kind of a matte effect. There are samples that I think maybe are being passed around. We're showing multiple images of these because the darker steel does sort of evolve with exposure. And the sample that you have sort of represents the product in its newish state with a little bit of change. So it does mellow as it's, as it's exposed. We're also including this example, this building, which I think most people are probably familiar with, Highline, that uses the same product and is sort of, have directly experienced the way this kind of weathers over time. Looking at details of the facade, you can see in section here the cornice with its profiles that sort of curve to some sharp points. Layering of the facade composition. At the mezzanine, there's a slender exterior mullion with a sort of bullnose profile. But above that, the structural beam is concealed by back painting with the color matching the steel. In addition, there's a setback soffit at the ground floor ceiling that also adds height to the horizontal reading from the exterior. And there's also a proposal for a limited number of movable and removable translucent interior panels for use behind the storefront windows in conjunction with store operations. That's what you see at the right hand of the rendering here. I'll get to that in detail later, but just so you understand what you're seeing there. Additional details of view of the spandrel, you can see. Also, I should say, I think that the color of the spandrel here is. Here on the left is more accurate to the color, it's intended to match the lighter steel infill that's directly adjacent to it. But also a detail of the base, which is in the darker steel where the steel curves out to meet. The new Prince Street entrance is recessed and flanked by curving glass storefront windows. There's a softly illuminated soffit, no other illuminated fixtures on the exterior. There, there is additional small logo and lettering signage or logo signage. You can see the small horses. Or glass, there's very, very small cavolini, little small horses. Plan, the plan of that recessed entry, as well as, you know, details of the, of the piers and mullions and their profiles, additional. Let's go back to these if we need to. View of the interior, just to show the, the partial mezzanine floor, which is similar to what's there existing, as well as just the concept of the windows, open windows with displays. And the floor plans, existing floor, first floor proposed and the second partial, partial floor like. Roof plan, the mechanicals will be replaced, but section sideline details here showing they are anticipated not to be. The elevations, I think, these are mostly things we touched on, but here are the drawings with all the details. The banners, as I mentioned, about two feet in projection. They're eight feet tall, you know, very simple in design, basically just a, you know, solid color with a small logo. No large text or other text. I think basically using sort of this little pop of color against the monochromatic facade, you know, to, rather than quantity or size or layering. We need signage program, including the chrome lettering both at the spandrel and at the second floor and slightly little 18-inch letters at the second floor. Very small lettering at the piers, lettering and logos. And at the storefront window, the curved storefront windows. This is what I mentioned about the program of sort of movable and removable panels that can be, that are hung from the soffit that are intended to be able to be used in different locations within, in conjunction with store operations since it's so transparent. Maximum deployment is represented on the upper right where there's four, for, for each floor. I think they would mostly be used at that end of the building near the service entrance. Back of house operations, but they would be kind of moved around for different temporary uses. A couple of night renderings or maybe evening renderings, I think these just. Understated by nature of the design and the signage and again, that there's not illumination besides that illuminated.
Thank you, thank you very much. Do we have questions on this? Questions? Yes, Commissioner Chu.
Oh. Thank you for all those details. I just had a couple of questions. The movable partition, is that hung from the soffit?
It's hung from the soffit, I can, if we go back to the section, well, I'll leave it here for a second, but the sections show it's, it's hung from within the soffit, there's slots for them to be hung. They're set one foot, four inches back from the.
And are they backlit? Or they just take the glow general ambient backlighting?
They're translucent, so any, they're not, they don't have any lighting of their own. I think that there's a sample in the tray, I think.
Yeah, I saw it.
Yeah.
It's like a three form or a product, acrylic type product.
But no, the, any light you're seeing through them is just the translucency of the material.
And the glass, like the big pieces, are these IGUs or are they monolithic? They are, so they're insulated pieces, okay. And can you give me a sense of the dimension? Your flat area, which is where the Ferrari sign is on top, and then you have a very delicate detail of the arches. What's the projection out? It'd be in your details very badly.
So there's.
It's a very delicate subtle detail I can see that, I just wanted to know how much projection they were.
Right, so for example, at the lower center would be one of those smaller mullions. Not having memorized the. Something like a couple of inches max, yeah.
Okay, so the differentiation from the flat elevation above and that where, where the, we are framing out the bays below is a couple inches that, because it's not flush.
No, so the, the, you know, the, the vertical mullions as, as well as the horizontal one that, that's between. Those are sort of a rounded bullnose that projects. And then above that, like the, again, the inner layer of, you know, the, everything sort of is a curved profile to this first flat layer. And then, as you can see in the section, then there's a little bit of stepping to that panel that's below the cornice. I think the cornice is proud of that a little bit. So.
At the top, it looks flat here, but it's not, correct? On your image on the right, the flat area, which is the, the, the flat area on top, right there. Now go down, there's a horizontal line, right there. Are those flush or is there a projection there?
Those, those sort of curve back to the glass a little bit.
But they're flush with the panel above it.
That whole thing, sorry, that whole, the whole lighter metal system is.
Oh, it's all foam cutouts, cutout, it's not framed projecting. Oh. Okay, okay, okay.
All right, if anyone would like to answer this question, please come up to the microphone because our.
I can answer the question that, that whole lighter metal assembly is flush. We are showing the joint lines because it will be assembled. And then, but above that, the first layer of the darker metal that is slightly projecting. And then the top is the cornice, which, you know, steps out, yeah, a little.
Right.
So there are, there is sort of some, you know, this variety of planes at play.
Okay, thank you.
Other, yes, Commissioner Jefferson.
So if you go to page 30. The, the concept of the building is that you have a frame of a darker color, correct? And the base of it, I think there's a base there, and then the infill is a lighter color, correct? And it's flat.
Correct, yes. That's correct. Those are the two metals that you have samples of in the tray. And I think just another thing that was a comment, I think at the time that we presented to the community board and maybe to the first presentation to staff, was that that lighter metal, as it was painted and was, looked maybe too bright and shiny or potentially people were concerned that it was kind of a mirror finish or something like that. And so we clarified and updated the choice to make sure that it has a sort of, that it's not too reflective, that it is lighter, but it's not, you know, has that sort of matte finish.
Question, so the black frame and then the, the floor slab, the, the metal there is recessed back from the frame, correct?
Well, at the, above, so there's a, above the actual horizontal mullion is where the, the, the beam edge is, and that's actually, above that, it's back painted glass. And then below, what you're seeing below that sort of middle line is actually the recessed soffit of the ceiling below.
Thank you.
But they're all sort of a single, intended to read as a single color, and so it's sort of.
Okay, anyone else? All right, we're gonna take public testimony, we may have more questions after that. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item, noting that there isn't? I will turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Anyone joining us via Zoom who would like to speak, please use the raise hand function. It seemed done, I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Two recommends denial.
Would you like to respond? Yeah.
I said this, that, I mean, at the community board, we did present more banners and that was one comment. And I do think that we refined the choice of the metals also in response to.
Okay, so. Any final questions, commissioners? Yes.
Sorry. And this is just because you provide such detailed information here. The spandrel, it's back painted right there?
Back painted above, yeah.
Above the line, because below it is actually a recessed soffit.
It's a recessed soffit.
That, that doesn't get lit because in your rendering, it looks dark.
Question, whether there is any lighting of the. Soffit below, okay.
Okay.
Right, so I think that on the left shows pretty well.
Yeah, the left, thank you. And above that is back paint that wants to match the stainless steel finish?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, all right, so I think we'll close the hearing and move to our discussion. Commissioner Chapin, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So.
Thank you, Commissioner Lutfi, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion on this building. And it is interesting, until the recent rezoning in Soho, if you were building a new building that had retail on the ground floor that required a special permit and you were not allowed to do a taller building. So this commission actually has a relatively long history of approving one-story and with mezzanine, sort of the height of two-story buildings throughout the historic district as we previously did on this site. And we have, in some cases, approved designs that relate to the cast iron architecture nearby and in other cases, approved very contemporary or abstract designs because it's a sort of a different building type. And so there are a variety of styles and materials and deep designs that are used for these smaller buildings in the district. So that is just a little something to provide some context for this discussion. And we'll begin, Vice Chair Bland, would you like to start this one?
I would love to. You know, this design just gets better and better as you sink your teeth into it. It's really very, very sophisticated, I think, and very elegant. You know, the, the massing and, and a lot of the formal response. You know, the, the, the massing and, and a lot of the, um, formal response, uh, from the first scheme has been retained. But what a world of difference, uh, it is in, in the elegance of this solution. Uh, I think it's appropriate that, uh, the, the metal is being used as it is, these two, two different, slightly two different tones. But the elegance of the detailing is, and I'm glad Commissioner Chu kept pounding on those questions so that we could really understand them even better. But I think the, um, that the, um, the plethora of detailing, uh, in your, in your, um, submission here was, uh, evidence of how, how sophisticated it, it all is. I love the slight little roundedness at the top of the, um, uh, of the vertical mullions. I think it was a, a touch of genius to change from five to six, uh, in the bays. I mean, these are subtle, subtle details, but they just make a world of difference, uh, in terms of the appreciation, I think, of the building. Uh, I do think there's one flag too many, uh, and that's the one on, on the right-hand side that proposed, the one on the left, I guess that's up Prince Street, I think it is. Uh, I just don't think it's necessary. You've got the other one right, right there. Uh, so I would leave the two on the long side, uh, and the one at the corner angle. Otherwise, I'm just very, very, uh, very much impressed by the design.
Commissioner Chapin.
Okay, uh, well, Commissioner Bland, uh, summed up everything so well. I agree. It's a very elegant design and totally suitable for the brand. I remember back when I was in college thinking, boy, I'd like to own a Ferrari, but anyway. Be that as it may, um, I also agree that that one banner may, it just looks a little out of place. Actually kind of interferes with the elegance of the building. I think a bit, maybe a blade sign over there or something, but the two banners in front, I think are fine. And I have nothing else to add.
Commissioner Lutfi.
I, I think Fred really, uh, did an amazing job talking about how elegant and well-designed this building is. Literally building upon what was there but before, but improving it. And just, there's, it's just these small moves, uh, that make it work. It, they're very, it's, I would say it's like elegant and restrained. And that's what makes it, it work so well. And it's this, you know, these little recesses and curves in the windows that sort of undulating in a way, but don't, don't really shout at you. And I agree with Fred about the verticality of the windows. The extra bay is a wonderful idea. The way the, the Prince Street, uh, entrance is recessed is also very sculptural. And, uh, so that it, it literally feels lighter than what was there before. And it is really, um, a great, um, reference to what the brand stands for. And, you know, I was all ready to be a little nervous about, you know, this whole concept of car company having a retail store to sell merchandise and, you know, everybody does a BMW. I mean, Ferrari is at another level, but I, I, I don't know. I think it will be a pleasure to walk by this store, uh, and admire it for, uh, what, you know, for what it is. I, I also do agree that that banner on, uh, the end, on the short end needs to come off. It's just not necessary. And thank you for taking all those banners off before we came here.
Right. Great. Commissioner Chu.
Um, yeah. Very nice proposal. I, I think that this is a great example of how modern contemporary architecture can sit really well with beautiful historic architecture. Because you play with the simple concepts of proportion and scale and they work together. Um, and I like how Mercer is treated different than Prince. Mercer is more vertical and it does recall the Scholastic building and it's, it's finer scale. And, and Prince has the big, large opening, which is like eighty-eight, which a big arch welcoming entry there. I think it recalls that. Very well done, very carefully detailed. All great, definitely appropriate. I'm just gonna say two things just because I was looking at your details and I, I do wonder whether the backpaint on the spandrel may not give you what you're looking for. Still appropriate, it's just a comment. And the base where the, the very elegant thin columns come down or are wrapped. I just, from a maintenance perspective, is a lot of stuff gonna go into that joint, just to, just a comment, but beautiful design. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Master.
Yeah, I agree with a lot of the comments. I mean, especially when you see it side by side, you see how beautiful the, the newer design is. I just wanted to add one more comment about the movable translucent screen panels. I think it's very clever and it offers flexibility. And it really keeps with the kind of the element, the, the design elements that you have here. And, and I think it's a great solution. In terms of, in terms of the signage, I know that you've removed, um, several banners. And I think that, you know, banners are so indicative of the Soho, you know, retail scene. And I think that you've kept all the other signage really minimal. So I don't have a problem with the three banners, um, here. Other than that, I, I, I agree with everybody else.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Such a great project. And, and what struck to me was the lightness of it. The original was heavy and this one is so light. That's, that's what modernism is all about, really is lightness and weight. They captured that.
Commissioner Goldblum.
I, I certainly agree with, uh, my fellow commissioners. It's a very elegant and beautifully done project. I also, um, I, yeah, I think it's, it's appropriate as is. I certainly, uh, think that fewer banners is always better in Soho. There's plenty of them. So I would agree with Fred on that. Um, and in terms of the, the, uh, spandrel backpainting, I, I agree with Stephen. You know, one of the coolest moves that Ferrari did in recent years is exposing their engine under glass in many of the mid, mid, mid-engine cars. And this was a perfect opportunity to expose some of the guts of the building. You're going to such extent to rebuild it. It, it seems like a lost opportunity, but it's yours, it's yours to do, but it's a beautiful job.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
I find it appropriate and elegant. I think the three banners are fine, but if there's not a majority, the two would be all right too.
Commissioner Chen.
Couldn't agree more. What a beautiful design and what an understatement. Couldn't agree more with, uh, Commissioner Bland. All this, um.
Okay, all right. So I do think a majority of commissioners do prefer two banners. So I think we'll do an approval with modifications. Vice Chair Bland.
Sure. Um, in the matter of, uh, ninety-two Prince Street in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. This is an application to re-clad the building and install storefront infill, signage and banners. I note, uh, I don't know, I'll just recommend approval. That the re-cladding of the existing commission-approved building will not damage or eliminate any historic features or materials, that the proposed facade design incorporating a series of rhythmic bays, uh, with shouldered, flat arch windows separated by heavier piers and set on low bulkheads reference, references cast iron buildings found, uh, in this historic district in a contemporary way. That the curved, deeply set entrance will provide a sculptural element to this otherwise planer facade and will relate well to the sculptural ornamentation of buildings throughout the historic district. That the presence of the mezzanine level marked with an exterior horizontal mullion and an interior band will break the, um, the height of the storefront bays and will relate well to the floor and ceiling heights of the adjacent facades. That the use of metal and glass recalls the evolution of cast iron facades in this historic district. And this contemporary design is a, is a continuation of the innovation, uh, of the innovative use of these materials. That the varied finishes of the, of the stainless steel and aluminum cladding ranging from darkened textured surface to polished chrome to the inner spandrel, all in gray tonality will harmonize with the painted metal found on the block and in the historic district. That the lettering at the sign bands and the projecting flagpoles with banners are well proportioned to the facades and the cumulative, uh, amount of signage, including two banners, not three banners on the flagpoles, pin-mounted signs at the entrances and the second story on both facades and small logos on the piers and glass, all with metal finishes will not overwhelm the building or call undue attention to itself. That the presence of banners and flagpoles is consistent with the commercial nature of the historic district. That the interior movable translucent screen panels behind the glass will obscure back of house operations as needed in a dynamic way. And that the work will not detract from the special architectural or historic character of the Soho Cast Iron Historic District.
Thank you. Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
And John, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Vice Chair Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Chu.
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum. Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi.
Aye.
Commissioner Master.
Aye.
Ten in favor, none opposed. The motion passes.
That's approved. Thank you. And we'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number two, LPC twenty-four dash one-one-zero-zero-eight. An application for a certificate of appropriateness, number of Manhattan, block five forty-five, lot thirty-nine, four thirty Lafayette Street. The four thirty Lafayette Street building, individual landmark, also in the NoHo Historic District. This is a Greek Revival style townhouse designed by Seth Greer and built in eighteen thirty-two to thirty-three. And the application is to install a barrier-free access chairlift.
Hey, commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing via Zoom. John, you now have control of the presentation. If you could just click on your screen. John Wali, if you could just click on your screen.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Right, but you need to click on your screen first.
Sure.
Great. And you can advance the slides using your arrow keys or your mouse. Please state your name for the record and you may begin.
Thank you.
Okay, so the presenter isn't going to share a screen. So Brian, did you go over this with them? Okay.
Yes, so John, you just need to, um, you're gonna accept, uh, sharing screen from Abby and then you can take control of the slides and advance it.
John, you, you can't share your screen. You just need to advance the slides using your arrow keys on your.
Click on the screen first.
Uh, can you control?
John, could you try, um, using your arrow key, the up or down on your computer?
Sorry about that, um.
Why don't I, uh, why don't you just tell me next and I will, I'll do it for you.
All right, that sounds great. Thank you. Uh, good morning, LPs commissioners and, uh, community representatives. Thanks for the opportunity to present, uh, this proposal for your consideration. Uh, my name is John Wali and I present Andrew L. Pettit, architect responsible for the accessibility improvement project for, at four thirty Lafayette Street, uh, designated landmark building. Uh, we are here today to respectfully request approval for the installation of a wheelchair platform lift. Our design prioritizes, uh, minimal visual impact and the strict adherence to the history character of the building and its surrounding context. Uh, next page, please. Yeah, so this page provide a contextual location map and the index of the presentation materials. The subject property, uh, property is situated within the NoHo District, Historic District and lies in the middle of the Lafayette Street between Astor Place and East Fourth Street. The map outlined the sequence of the, our documentation, uh, beginning with the history context, followed by the overview of existing conditions and concluding with the proposed intervention and visualizations. And next page, please. Yeah, so this map is from the Landmark Preservation Commission, uh, illustrate the boundary of the NoHo District, Historic District. Uh, the subject building is identified here as indicated in red, here and here. Uh, the proposal has been, uh, carefully developed to ensure that the intervention respect the architectural integrity and visual rhythm of the district. Uh, next page, please. Yeah, regarding a brief, uh, story of the project, uh, as for sorry Lafayette is the Greek Revolver style townhouse. One of the very first landmark properties that, uh, commissions oriented upon the creation of the landmark law. And we were reluctant to impose any mechanical device to meet the requirement of any other agencies demanding ADA access. However, over, um, over several conversations with both commissions and the mayor's office for persons with disability, disability, as well as the landmark division of, um, local community board. Uh, we arrive at the, uh, feel is the simplest, at least objectionable of all the available solutions. It solves the entry to the existing restaurant, but also provide ADA compliance entry, at least over the front obstacle to the rest of the building. Uh, so this is the existing street of the facade. And the, the Greek Revolver style facade with the neighborhood's historic architecture vocabulary here. Uh, as you can see, uh, digestion building is remaining their own historic languages. Uh, next page, please. Yeah, so we viewed, uh, incorporated nineteen sixty-five photo of NoHo District on the left and nineteen forties tax photos on the right, uh, to better understand the evolution of the building's century condition. As seen in these images, the front facade has remained largely unchanged. These references has informed our commitment to, um, preserve its character while improving accessibility. So we'll sh, show those images later. Next page, please. Yeah, so these three photos are the existing condition of the facade elements, uh, including the entry stairs and with the iron railings and mezzanine details. Our proposal is to have minimum modification, trying to, um, maintain the existing look. So when you see the next page. Yeah, this is the focusing on the entrance area. So the left picture is the existing condition of entrance door and the right side, that's another pair of the French door. So the proposed lift will be, uh, sided at the right side of the steps, which is this side. Our location choosing to, um, maintain a look and historic hierarchy of the primary interest while complying with ADA access requirements. Uh, next page, please. Yeah, so the, uh, existing front and basement floor plans demonstrate the area for the wheelchair lift. So this area is the area for the wheelchair lift and the bottom is the basement floor. Next page, please. Yeah, so this is the proposed wheelchair lift. So the area for the wheelchair lift, uh, showing in the highlight in yellow. That's the area for the wheelchair lift. So the mechanism is folding equipments will park, uh, where. So the mechanism is folding equipments will park when not needed inside of the hall against the war and then only exterior elements to be designed control box will be set up on the exterior at the south side of the opening and the stairs. So when you see the next page. Yeah, so this is, the bottom side is the front facade and then the area of the wheelchair lift. So a few additional penetration of the existing stone will be necessary to anchor the rail as the current connection or existing handrail which must be removed. So as you see, these are the existing entrance door that but because of this railing of the wheelchair lift, we had to use some anchors to the existing wall and then there will be some self standing post holding those railings. So the entrance seems to be generally open during the day and then closed after dark. So we need to provide a secure method of closing for the evening. So we had to modify this entrance door, as you see. So we're suggesting using existing pair of the door, reconfigure the singular fixed panel while adding a portion of all doors, creating a single four foot door panel. And we'll provide three foot three opening for the wheelchair lift and for the occupants. The pair of half the circle around the door will close over the railing or cut into the edge. So when you go to the next page. Yeah, maybe the picture is small, but there is two carved out door panel which is recreated. And that will allow to penetrate the railing into the door, but still able to open to the outside. And next page, please. Yeah, so this is the one of the rendering of the proposed wheelchair lift. So that will serve from the bottom and then it will lift and follow to the railing and land it on the top of the steps. Next page, please. Yeah, you could see the clue of this new proposed door. So this, we will preserve the existing door as part of this panel and then we'll match the color of the existing doors and create this side light. But this side light and the existing door became one panel, the four feet door. And then we'll open like this. So most of the time when the restaurant is open, that the door will be open like this. And then there's a little button on the left side that will call this wheelchair lift. So you will run and follow these railings. Next page, please. Yeah, finally, we present a sample image of the wheelchair model as I've just shown under this condition. So this Benjamin Moore OC11 clay beige is the color matched to the existing color of the existing wall. So that will be painted on the railing and the post. So that those look will not disturb any historical look critically. So in closing, we'd like to express our sincere gratitude to the Commissioners and the representative of committee. We believe this design offer will be a thoughtful, reversible and visually appropriate situation to provide equitable access to this historic building. So thanks for hearing and yeah.
All right, thank you very much. Do we have any questions, Commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Chu?
So this is 430 is only this sliver, this piece, there's definitely several of them that make the whole, the row. Therefore, the wheelchair lift is going to the north side as opposed to the south? Is that, because it looks like it's blocking egress from the lower level.
Yes, so we can avoid, correct. Yes, so it's hard to avoid when it operate. It's kind of blocking the portion of the entrance to the basement floor. But we still have approximately three feet distance in between this railing and at the edge of this wheelchair lift.
Okay, so you still can meet code for that condition.
Yeah, so when you go back to the plan view. Yes, here. So there is a three foot four opening to the basement. Yes. So this is kind of, it will become an obstacle while it operates. But when you use it and it will become up and then folded on the top. So it will not hinder any occupants' passage.
Yeah, Commissioner Lutfi?
So it will become an obstacle when it operates. I just want to clarify one more time. What exactly is there permanently and what moves? Because and it's, in other words, it's not like that's sitting on the street.
Right, right.
So is the base sitting on the street?
What? Yeah, I think Corey can answer.
Yeah, I mean, it's a chairlift on rail, so the railing itself is permanent.
So the railing
Right, and the lift will be able to, you know, transport up and down and stored into the vestibule in the upright position, flipped up in an upright position. So someone could walk by it. Only on the sidewalk when someone's actually using it, but that railing that you see here would remain permanent.
Okay, thank you for
Thank you. Yeah, when you go back to the elevation, it will show. Correct, thank you. So the item number three, proposed entrance elevation, that will be a look.
Okay, any other questions? All right, not seeing any other questions. We'll move to testimony and then we'll come back to you. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I'm going to turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Anyone joining us via Zoom who would like to speak, please use the raise hand function, after which I will promote you to panelist. And we ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. Our first speaker will be Chloe Gregoire.
Good day, Commissioners. My name is Chloe Gregoire and I'm speaking on behalf of Village Preservation. We find this proposed solution to bring barrier free access to the building to be inappropriate. Unlike the other two recently approved lifts along Colonnade Row, which required minimal removal of historic materials, this proposal unacceptably includes full replacement of historic door significantly altering its configuration. We are also concerned that the framing for this lift will protrude much further onto the sidewalks than the approvals on either side. And that it will block more of the facade and window of this individual landmark. Village Preservation urges LPC and the applicant to explore other potentially less intrusive modes of providing accessibility here, such as those recently approved for the neighboring buildings at 428 and 432 Lafayette, which were less intrusive and impactful on the historic fabric of those buildings. There should be a consistent plan along log range terrace for barrier free access. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Deborah Y.
Regarding the proposed installation of a new barrier free access lift at the subject property, the Lower East Side Preservation Initiative, LESBI, has no objection to the design as shown. We believe that the work will have minimal impact on the building's historic fabric, is reversible and is finished to visually blend in as much as possible with the facade masonry. The question has arisen whether the accessibility equipment on Colonnade Row should be regularized. Although there is a reasonable argument for this, we would be concerned that a pattern of identical equipment would become its own design feature. We believe that an assortment of minimally intrusive features would likely call less attention to itself. Thank you for consideration.
Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else joining us via Zoom who would like to speak, please use the raise hand function. Christina Conroy will be our next speaker.
Good morning, Commissioners. By the way, I've raised the raised hand function four times and it keeps turning off. So, good morning, I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now, including this application, we have seen within the past few months proposals for access at three of the four houses on Colonnade Row. We acknowledge that access should be provided at these buildings because of the commercial activities and the basement and ground floors. We also understand the difficulties of providing access if, in fact, the houses are under separate ownership and are not interconnected. But is this really the best we can do for these remarkable individual landmarks? At typical row houses, lifts usually affect the basement level entrance and area ways. At Colonnade Road, however, the main entrances have always been on the ground floor. Despite some alterations, the ground floor appearance of the houses seen in the earliest drawings and photographs of the row is largely intact. Lost details are restorable. Historic images of the row suggests potential solutions, and please see our written testimony. Now, instead, the street level facades will be presented to the public as a series of hulking mechanical devices. Our testimony on the two previous proposals for access noted the extremely deteriorated conditions of the buildings and asked why discretionary permits are being issued before restorative work is undertaken. Now, we were told that the owners are working on testing masonry restoration materials. The permits for facade restoration were issued in 2018, seven years ago. They have expired and masonry testing doesn't require seven years. Meanwhile, permits continue to be issued for the interior alterations and for non restorative exterior work that in some cases degrades the fabric and appearance of these buildings. This gives the owners no incentive to get moving on the restoration. It's time for a more preservation oriented approach for both the owners and this commission towards these important landmarks. We again ask that this and other non restorative permits not be issued until real progress is made on restoration. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you for your testimony. I will note that we request for speakers to use the raise hand function only when prompted at the beginning of the public testimony period. Otherwise, using raise hand function too early causes a pop up window to appear on Zoom, which obscures the presentation. Anyone else joining us via Zoom who would like to speak, please use the raise hand function. All right, seeing none, I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board two recommends denial.
All right, thank you. And before we turn back to the applicant to respond to the comments, I do want to just say that we have, and I'm going to ask John Weiss, our deputy counsel, to speak a little bit about the condition, but accessibility is something that is very important. And we believe that all of our landmarks should be accessible. And so accessibility is not the kind of application we would hold up if there is other work that is required, restoration work in this case. But I will ask John Weiss to speak to the restoration work that's being planned and ongoing.
The commission is fully aware of the condition of the building, as is National Trust. We've done a joint site visit several years ago and the owner has been slowly moving towards restoration of the Colonnade. And as I mentioned at a prior hearing, they did do long term testing. It took approximately a year to do the testing of the composite material. They're doing further testing now and I think this spring they should have a report to the owner for addressing the column and the facade.
Now I'd like to ask the applicant if you would like to respond to the comments that we've heard on the proposal.
Yeah, thanks for the comments. Yeah, so even though we wanted to minimize the impact for this, installing this wheelchair lift, there is an obstacle that we couldn't use any basement access like our two adjacent buildings. So they provide a severe lift on, to the basement floor to access the basement restaurant and the first floor. But in our case, we don't have any access to the basement. The basement is a part of the mechanical room and then also not part of this tenant's location. So there is a limit, limitation that we cannot install any of access to the basement. So that was the only solution and we have observed and studied two other methods, which is the standard type of ramp and then another one is elevator to the upper floor. But that will deteriorate the facade much more than this wheelchair lift. So that was our list minimum solution for these historic buildings. Thank you. And if Andrew has any comments, please add on.
This is Andrew Pettit. Architect of Record era and am I, am I being seen?
If there's anything you'd like to add, you're welcome to.
Oh, you hear me, okay. First of all, we objected to the building department request to do this. Primarily because this is not just a landmark building within a landmark area. This is one of the very first landmark properties that the commission anointed upon creation of the law. But we persevered and we went through several different possibilities. And we found that this was really the least objectionable. What you're left with, because what we're doing is the hand, the chair folds up, but it parks when it's not being used inside. And so it is not sitting outside. I've seen too many of these that are kind of rusting away because they're outdoors. And what you're left with then is just a couple of rails that are anchored to the ground. They're not, the initial group that is across the facade is not bolted into the the stone. The mechanism, the driving force, the gears and all of that are all inside and travel with the chair. The as the chair makes the corner and starts up to get the proper width and as much as we possibly could, the first run of rails are anchored into the side of that stone. One of the reasons it doesn't, didn't seem so objectionable is that there are, we had to remove existing railings and we will try hard to use the old connections. And then beyond that, it's all been, it's all held by vertical steel posts that are bolted to the floor, not to the stone. The only exterior piece that, other than the, than the two posts, the two railings that it glides on, is a call button that will be set on the left side. And that is apparently innocuous electronic device because it doesn't need to have a whole lot of lighting and so forth. It's a very discreet, small piece that someone on the, who wants the, needs the chair, presses the button and the chair comes out. When it's finished, the chair goes back in and parks itself inside. I think that's basically, it just seems like we have studied many of the possibilities and this seemed to be the one. Although a couple of them were acceptable to the local Community Board Landmark Commission, this community board landmark commission, this one that we felt was the simplest. The hard part here was trying to adapt the, an entry to close the door at night and still accommodate the railings and so forth. And we found that by using the two current doors and accommodating a panel, a fixed panel, plus an additional panel on the main door, we had the dimension to allow the chair to go up and down with the door open. But also, when not in use, the door could be closed and locked and accessed by the people, the rest of the people living in the building.
Thank you.
I also wanted to say, I'm sorry, my time is up?
Well, we do have a question, that's so. But why don't you finish up, and then we'll ask the question?
I just wanted to add that this is a venerable restaurant that has been there for 35 years. And because we are making some additions and trying to get a final C of O here, the handicap requirement has been added as an objection by the Building Department.
Thank you, thanks. Commissioner Goldblum.
Did you guys investigate the Sesame Lift, which we saw on that building on Fifth Avenue in the 60s, the Warren and Letmore townhouse that has like, kind of, it dies into the stairs? I would imagine it's not the cheapest thing around, but for this particular location, it seems like it might be worth exploring.
That is a, that was a lift that was, it involved rebuilding the stoop and incorporating it into the steps.
Did you guys investigate that at all?
We haven't.
I'm not familiar with it.
Yeah, I just wanted to add too, I also think that one may have been a wide stoop and a portion of which was the Sesame, you know, lift, and a portion was not. And I'm not sure that may be a requirement that you have to have a fixed stair in addition to having a part that's operable. I'm not entirely sure of that, but I think it was a much wider stoop.
It was, yeah.
Right.
I mean, I'm looking at their website. It looks like they do offer it for use in narrower entrances, but it might be worth exploring.
Okay. All right, I think we'll move to our discussion now. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so this is our third application to look at how to incorporate barrier-free access into these individual landmarks that read as a single unit. They all have different entries, they have different owners, and the uses are on different floors. Some are in the lower level, and some, in this case, are on the, you go up a few steps and on the main floor level. So the previous two applications we reviewed were to go down to the lower level. This space is above, and so they're proposing a different solution, which would be a chair-rail lift that would ride up and be stored on the inside. So only the railing would be visible on the street and permanent. But this does also require modifying the door to allow for the door to be closed and locked when not in use. So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Jefferson, would you like to start this one?
Seems to me that this is the best they could do.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Yeah, it's a shame, you know, if there was ever a building that should have been developed all at once with one owner and one entrance, it's this. It's just a shame, you know, week after week, we, you know, junk this poor building up. But, you know, compliance with this law is very important, as you said, and this is the best way to do it, it's the least bad solution, and so it.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Agreed. It may not be ideal, but it's the best solution I can see, and they need to do it. So appropriate.
All right, Commissioner Chen.
After three decades of accessibility laws, which is a civil rights law, it's about time.
Vice Chair Bland.
It just amazes me that, you know, that up until recently, and certainly back in 1830s, that stairs were just, I mean, everybody put stairs everywhere. And now that we're healthy, we finally realize that some of us really can't deal with the stairs. I don't know what they were doing back then, they just maybe gave up and went somewhere else. Anyway, it is sort of amazing that architecture has finally figured out that not everybody can deal with the stairs. I don't know that there's a better solution than this. I found it very interesting that in the testimony, a person said that rather than trying to organize this in some consistent way, as the houses are organized in a very consistent way, that she thought maybe that would be calling too much attention to it and the variety. So like it or not, we have variety, and I think we just can't change that because of the ownership, because some is up, some are down. In any event, I guess this is, we have to just accept this, and it's as good as it can be, as far as I can understand.
Thank you.
Right, thank you. Yeah, and that comment was made by the Lower East Side Preservation Initiative.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, Commissioner Chapin.
Yeah, I can approve this. It's a necessary change. And while there are a variety of solutions that are happening here, they are reversible and minimally intrusive in terms of any, there's not really damaged architectural features. So I think, you know, in the future, if there's a common owner, then they can come up with a new solution and, you know. But I think at the moment, this is necessary and, as I said, reversible.
Commissioner Lutfi.
Yeah, I agree. This is what we have right now, and it's not perfect, but it's going to do the job, and it is reversible, as Diana said. And in the future, there may be something else. I can approve this.
Commissioner Chu.
Agreed.
Commissioner Master.
Appropriate.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Jefferson, would you make a motion to approve? Thanks.
Can you make sure you speak into the mic and loudly, please?
In the matter of LPC-24-11008, 430 Lafayette Street, application is to install a barrier-free lift. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will be usable and will not illuminate or damage any significant architectural features. As the proposed wheelchair lift on rails will provide barrier-free access to primary entrance. Entrance of the building in the least intrusive manner possible, that the lift assembly will be typically included in design, finished to blend stained stonework at the entrance return, that the lift platform will be stored within the building when not in use, minimized. Different doors with cutouts for the lift. By unobstructed, barrier-free access. That the placement material proportioned initially would enter door and side lights, big side light tile of the building, that the work will not detract from this particular individual landmark.
Thank you. Commissioner Master, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
With ten in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, that's approved. Thank you. And we'll move to the next item.
I signed this public hearing, number three, LPC-25-09203. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 832, lot 39, 284 Fifth Avenue, the Wilbraham Individual Landmark. This is a romanesque revival-style apartment hotel building designed by D&amp;J Jardine and built in 1888 to 90. The application is to legalize the replacement of display windows without LPC permits, modify display windows, replace infilling cladding, and install an interior display structure and signage.
Morning, everyone. My name is Julianne Carlyle from AZARC, and I'm joined by my colleagues Pierre Terouse and Debbie McEllegott, and we are representing Karen Pierce Stone and Architectural Services. Today, we are here to present the proposed exterior renovations at 284 Fifth Avenue. Built between 1888 and 1890, 284 Fifth Avenue, also known as the Wilbraham, was designed by David and Jean Jardine as a bachelor apartment hotel. Down here in its current context, it is an eight-story, romanesque revival-style individual landmark located at the northwest corner of West 30th Street and Fifth Avenue in south-central Midtown Manhattan. This timeline of photos from 1893 to today illustrates the continuity of the building's upper floors alongside a series of changes at the street level. In 1893, with the awnings retracted, we can see the storefront is segmented by mulleons and features large lettering reading fine china and cut glass on the cast iron spandrel panels above. This 1907 image captures the 30th Street facade with the awnings extended and features matching signage with the words pottery and porcelain. In 1930, we can see a transitional state of the storefront. The awnings and spandrel panels were removed, but the mulleons remained. We can also see that the transom windows were recessed, and there was a bulkhead below the storefront. And in 1940, we can see an evident sign band was added in place of the spandrel panels, now positioned in front of the cast iron column. New awnings were installed below their previous position, allowing us to see the transom windows above. It is important to note in these 1998 photos the existing conditions at the time of the building's designation. In the right photo at Fifth Avenue, we can see the bulkheads had been removed and were replaced within large storefront windows prior to designation. We can also see in this image that the granite at the pier and signage boxes with large raised lettering also existed at this time. And in contrast, in the left image showing 30th Street, we can see bulkheads with molding were maintained, along with the historical infill that was added around the mulleoned windows. These photos document the most recent conditions prior to the installation of sidewalk sheds in July of 2024, which now limit clear views of the first-floor facades. In these images, we can see the Shalom Brothers awning and signage that were moved under a previously approved staff-level application. And here we see images that provide views of the storefronts behind the rolling shutters. These are currently housed within the signage boxes, covering the transom windows that exist behind them. These photos also highlight the mismatched appearance of the storefronts, as 30th Street is currently painted yellow with the molding removed, and Fifth Avenue facade is predominantly black-framed glazing. This 2012 Google Street View shows the 30th Street storefront windows with mismatched mulleons. The glazing shown here was replaced without a permit, and although the exact date of this work is unknown, part of this application seeks to resolve this violation. It is important to note that whenever this work was done, the bulkheads below and surrounding historic infill remained. Therefore, the size of these windows did not change, only the glazing itself changed. And these recent photos, taken after the sidewalk sheds were installed, show the storefronts at their current condition. In the first image, we can see the condition of the granite on Fifth Avenue is in need of repair. In the second image, also of Fifth Avenue, we can see a closer view of the storefront windows installed prior to landmark designation. Images three and four are of the 30th Street facade. These images show the replaced glazing that resulted in the violation that we discussed in the previous slide. We can see this new butt-jointed glazing has three panes without mulleons in between them. It is also important to note the condition of the nonhistoric 30th Street bulkheads in these images. After probing these bulkheads, our team learned they are not properly insulated, which we will discuss in future slides. As previously mentioned, the Shalom Brothers signage and awning was removed, revealing historic glass infill behind, shown in these current building elevations. These elevations also reflect the vinyl wraps on the existing signage boxes and vinyl window stickers, both of which were approved at staff level. These elevations highlight the portion of work that we will be covering, and we can now begin to detail our proposed changes. At the Fifth Avenue facade, in plan, we can see the existing signage boxes that house the rolling shutters are very dense, at 19 inches deep, and extend beyond the storefront, partially covering the brownstone. By removing the rolling shutters, our proposed signage boxes can have a much slimmer and lighter profile at four inches deep and a reduced width, so they do not extend over the brownstone. A three-inch gap between the facade and new signage reveals the transom windows behind. Patch to the signage box is blade signage at the street corners, which we will cover in more detail later. These elevations give us a better visual overview of the demolition and proposed work at Fifth Avenue. Along with the general cleaning of all of the existing materials on the first floor, we are proposing to replace the existing granite cladding with a darker granite at the step, column, and curb below the glass storefronts, unifying all elements of this facade. The new granite veneer at the column includes the engraved numbers 284. We are also proposing new doors with interior vinyl window stickers and new adhesive mulleons at the interior and exterior panes of the storefront windows. It is important to note that although this storefront is not ADA accessible, there is an accessible entrance seen here on the left of the 30th Street plan. Similarly, to Fifth Avenue on the 30th Street facade, our work aims to clean the existing materials and replace the existing imposing signage boxes. At the interior of the 30th Street facade, we are proposing an interior soffit, which is included in this scope due to its relation to the existing transom windows that you will see in later slides. From these exterior elevations, you can see, along with the replaced signage, we are proposing to paint the storefront black to unify it with the Fifth Avenue facade, new window stickers at the left entry, new mulleons to match the style of the existing historic infill, and new bulkheads below. Looking at the interior elevations of the Fifth Avenue facade, we see the placement of the proposed mulleons and profile of the new door. These elevations also illustrate that the transom windows were painted white to conceal a view of the rolling shutters and signage box on the exterior. Interior renovations received LPC and DOB approval in a previous filing. As mentioned before, this work is included in the scope due to the new soffits' relation to the transom windows above. These transom windows were previously covered in sheetrock to also conceal a view of the rolling shutters and signage box on the exterior. Here you can see sections of the Fifth Avenue vestibule with the new door, granite cladding, and signage box that has a three-inch gap to reveal the painted transom windows behind. The signage box has a reduced length, so it no longer extends past the mulleon line of the storefront below, further reducing its overall presence as a whole. At 30th Street, in detail A. At Thirty-S Street, in detail A, you can see the current bulkhead consists of plywood framing and sheetrock and lacks proper insulation. Therefore, we are proposing a new fire-rated bulkhead with molding reflecting the romanesque revival style of this building. And again, you can see the signage box has a reduced height to meet the mullion line below. Closer photos of the Fifth Avenue facade show the damaged granite veneer with worn-down adhesive traction strips and the window joints. Here we see the adhesive mullion details, which will be applied on the interior and exterior of the glass. On Fifth Avenue, we are proposing a straight-profile mullion to match the surrounding existing storefront trim. Taking a closer look at the Thirty-S Street facade, we can see the shape of the historic infill and the damaged condition of the current bulkhead. Pill A shows the proposed adhesive mullions with a similar profile to the existing historical infill. At the bulkheads below, we are proposing to reintroduce the moldings we saw in the building's designation photos. Details B and C show their proposed profile that reflects the romanesque revival style of the building. This rendering illustrates the proposed elements in the context on Thirty-S Street, shown alongside the existing conditions for comparison. This image shows the extent of the granite we are proposing to replace on Fifth Avenue. Upon closer inspection, we found that the decorative elements of the original column no longer exist, and only damaged concrete remains in its place. Looking at the proposed veneer section, detail B, we can see the application of the new granite and the engraved numbers are a quarter inch deep and five and three-quarter inches tall. Here, in detail B, we can see the new proposed granite cladding at the curb and entry step. Our proposed granite now includes half-an-inch nosing and three-eighths-inch engraved anti-slip roofs at the step. Here we can see more in-depth specifications for the proposed signage on Fifth Avenue. On both facades, the new signage boxes have reduced size in all directions, as well as the size of the lettering. And the same for Thirty-S Street. The new signage boxes are black aluminum with a four-inch overall width. The one-inch-thick lettering projects half an inch from the face of the signage box. These letters are backlit by internal low-wattage LED mats and are an opaque white acrylic material to create a flat white appearance during the day and a glowing effect at night. In detail D, you can see a proposed attachment method showing the new signage will be attached through the wooden frame of the transom windows and anchored at the interior ceiling to avoid further alterations to existing historic material. However, this attachment detail is subject to change. Once the removal of the existing signage boxes is approved and the existing conditions are revealed to us, we will work with our signage specialists to further detail the attachment method and possibly reuse existing connection points. As previously mentioned, we are proposing blade signs, shown in detail A, at the corners of the new installations along Fifth Avenue and Thirty-S Street. Due to the historic framings surrounding the Thirty-S Street storefronts and the minimal framing of the Fifth Avenue facade, the blade signs will be mounted directly to the proposed signage boxes, avoiding any disturbance to historic material. Both blade signs project fourteen inches from the face of the box to ensure neither project more than eighteen inches from their respective facades. This slide represents the materiality of the existing water table, glass, cast iron, brownstone, new dark granite, new storefront paint color, and black metal signage. Our renders tie in all of the elements discussed to give you a general idea of our proposed work on Thirty-S Street. And on Fifth Avenue. We believe our proposal thoughtfully maintains the building's integrity by responding to its current condition, aligning with the state of the building at the time of the designation, and restoring historic elements where possible. We appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, we have some questions. Commissioner Ginsburg?
Am I correct in understanding that the black granite on the Thirty-S Street bulkhead, you're proposing black granite there?
On the Thirty-S Street, no, the bulkhead will not be granite.
What, is it just painted?
Yeah, painted wood, like the existing.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? All right, we're going to move to public testimony, and we'll come back to you. All right, and I'll note that there is no one in the hearing room to speak on this item, so I will turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Anyone joining us via Zoom who would like to speak, please use the raise hand function. Our first speaker will be Christina Conroy.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now, the Victorian Society recommends that proposed first-floor display windows be redesigned to better reflect the historic configuration of this romanesque revival-style individual landmark building. The designation report and historic photos describe missing features, as well as those that exist but are covered over. Now, first, the Fifth Avenue storefronts should include bulkheads, as do the one on Thirty-S Street. These storefronts originally had bulkheads, as do all historic storefronts of this period. Second, the large decorative cast iron column visible on the second floor of the Fifth Avenue facade should extend down through the first floor. According to the designation report, this column remains behind modern cladding. It's seen in historic photographs, starting on slide four of the presentation, and shown most clearly in the nineteen-thirty NYPL picture on slide seven. While the commission perhaps can't require that it be uncovered, it can disallow the proposal to recover it. The designation reports also states that the original bulkhead grills remain behind plywood panels. Finally, the storefront originally had glazed transoms where the proposed sign bands are. Signs were placed on the masonry bands above. Reinstituting the transoms is important to restoring the grand historic proportions of this building. Many first-floor modifications here were made without a permit. The extent of all original historic materials should be clarified in the presentation with clear notes that this is to be retained. The renovation is an opportunity to regain some of the lost detail and articulation seen in the nineteenth-century streetscapes, so that this building can further contribute to Fifth Avenue's rich character. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Kaylee Johnson.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Kaylee Johnson. I'll be speaking on behalf of the Historic Districts Council. HDC finds this proposal to be inappropriate, especially given that two-eighty-four Fifth Avenue is an individual landmark. The columns originally would have been designed to be legible and clad in stone. In addition, the glass storefront conflicts with the romanesque revival style. We recommend that the applicant restore the building's storefront back to its original configuration and materials. There's ample documentation available for this applicant to produce an excellent reconstruction. Thank you so much.
Anyone else joining us, I assume, who would like to speak, please use the raise hand function. Seeing none, I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Five recommends denial.
Would you like to respond to the comments we've heard?
Maybe in particular, if you can explain the condition of the transoms at those storefronts and the bulkhead on West Thirty-S Street.
The transom windows on Thirty-S Street and Avenue were concealed. And the column that is padded in granite no longer remains. There's... While we understand that a fully restorative approach, well, given... Not feasible at this time, but we believe our conventions are a bit forward.
Commissioners, any final questions? All right, so let's move to our discussion. Commissioner Chapin, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Lutfi. Would you second that motion? Seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we're looking at storefront modifications at the corner of this individual landmark. The full-height storefront on the Fifth Avenue facade was in place at the time of designation, and so they are at, sort of making, adding some features to it and replacing just the door. So on Fifth Avenue, we have the storefront that was vested is there since designation. They're replacing the door with a frameless door. They are adding mullion covers over the butt joints in the glass. They are re-cladding the column. They've done a probe and haven't found any historic fabric behind it. And they're removing projecting security gates and their housing and installing a thinner black sign above the storefront with cutout letters. And then on the Thirty-S Street facade, there is a violation for the replacement of the display windows only. That's the only fabric that was replaced with the butt-jointed glass. There is some historic framing on Thirty-S Street, and so they are proposing mullion covers on Thirty-S Street that would match the historic framing elements that still remain on that facade. And then, I guess, painting the back, the bulkhead, and doing proper insulation behind it, and similarly, a sign in lieu of the projecting security gate housing and two bracket signs on the corner. And so, the other thing I would just also point out is that they are proposing this display installation right behind the glass on Thirty-S Street. And so, given that it's a fixed display fixture, we would have to review that as well, so we should include that in our comments. Commissioner Goldblum, would you like to start this one?
Yeah, this is a toughie for me. The building is such a remarkable, robust building with a very well-documented, partially intact storefront. And while the... Their approach is one that is normally one that we approve. In this particular case, I personally have difficulty with it. You know, taking the found condition as the basis for the project, I think, is not necessarily okay. Not doing anything is, of course, allowed, but once you...
Yeah, although they have to address the windows on Thirty-S.
Right, okay, right. In most cases, not doing anything is allowed, but once you're doing something, I think, you know, as Patricia had said in the testimony, I think that we should look at it. I think that the placement of the sign band over the transoms, which are existing, is not okay. I think that you could place them lower, you could place them within it, you could do raised letters on it, you could do it above it. I mean, the historic record provides plenty of evidence for different options that did not obscure the transoms on either side, and the fact that they are there, and that they are placing new material in front of them, in my opinion, is not okay. I think that the faux mullions on the street side just look bizarre next to the straight aluminum extrusions on the avenue side. I just think it looks weird. I think that the bulkhead looks weird, you know, having a faux historic bulkhead on one side and a granite step on the other. You know, it just, it doesn't, it doesn't look right to me. So I would, you know, I think that the granite cladding of the column is appropriate. I think that the blade sign is appropriate, but I think that the rest of it needs to be rethought. And I, I, I mean, normally, we give a lot of latitude to storefronts in historic districts. This is an individual landmark, and it's got unique historic elements that are being concealed, so I have difficulty with that.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg?
Yeah, so I first want to say there's some good things here. Getting rid of the roll-down shutters is a real plus. And, so, I want to note that I agree with much of what Commissioner Goldblum says. I said the blue-don mullions just are going to look blue-don, and better to leave it as is, and at some point, if one wanted to fully recreate. And I also agree that there are ways of doing the signage up in the transom where you're not fully blocking the transom, as Commissioner Goldblum had said. And then in the bulkhead, the dark color seems to me, it would be better to match the gray of the stone adjacent to it or something than the dark color. So I think there's some good parts of this. I think the blade signs are fine, but there needs to be, and just looking, although there wasn't that much information, the display behind the glass on Thirty-S Street should be, is also fine, because you can see through it. It ties into, I think, what the store is selling, but it would have been nice to have a little more information on that.
Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I mean, agreeing on the comments. I think this is such a beautiful landmark building, individual landmark building, and I think, obviously, the mullions, obviously. And I think the matching and the...
Vice Chair Bland?
Yeah, this is all better than the existing, but is it good enough on an individual landmark? I think the question is, and I don't think it is yet. I think working on with some of the details that have just been expressed, and either with staff or even coming back to us, I'm not sure where this is going, but I just think it needs to, it's game a bit in terms of kind of getting back toward the spirit of the original.
Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, we permit a lot of latitude with storefronts, in this case, because it's an individual landmark, and there are some still-preserved elements that are, you know, very, been there since the beginning, really, almost. I think that some further changes need to be made in the design. I agree about, you know, the transoms, also the pier. Ideally, it would be revealed, but if not, there certainly should not be a dark color based on, you know, it's, what it's been for, you know, all this time on the Fifth Avenue side. With regard to the dark color of the bulkhead, I actually have less problem with that, and if you look at the photo from eighteen-ninety-three, it appears that the Fifth Avenue side actually had a dark bulkhead, so it looks as dark as, like, it looks like it's black. Well, on the other side, it might be gray, but in any event, so I don't object to that particularly. But I think they should try to preserve and, not only preserve, but perhaps reveal some of these elements that are still there, because I don't think it will really materially interfere with what they want to do with regard to visibility of their interior. And I don't have a problem with the display in that one window. That's fine.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lutfi?
That repeating everything that everyone has said, I'm actually going to add one more thing. I just want to make...
I just want to make the overarching statement that I do believe that wherever the base of the building can be used in some way as part of what they're proposing, I think we should do it. This is a landmark building, and I think what's going on here really neuters, you know, the base and detracts. This would work well on another building, but not on this one. I also want to bring up the display. There's something about it that's really bothering me because it's almost reading like, I know exactly what it is, I'm very familiar with stone displays, and I think there's something about it that is, like, almost reading as if it's a shade. It's, it's too, they're too, these little, you know, these long displays of stone are almost too close together and too close to the window. I, I actually don't even think it's doing a service to the business, so I would recommend setting them back in some way and, you know, making your, making these windows, like, more inviting, so that people want to look in and come in. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chu?
I'm in agreement with most of my fellow commissioners' comments. I think my overall statement about it is, it's a very important corner to an important building, and the corner really anchors the building, but I feel like there's too many inconsistencies on these two simple facades, where there's different stone use, different mullion use. And I, and I also agree that we should try to protect that transom and not just cover it. So I do think it needs to be stepped back and re-looked at again. There's various elements I don't think are working yet. I do agree with Jeannie about the display, too. I think it would help to either do them ninety degrees so you can look into the space, or set them back slightly, so that we aren't just blocking the window, the storefront itself.
Commissioner Master?
I'm going to say that the removal of the display window glazing is okay. I don't think it was a significant feature. The signage, the size of the signage and the amount of the signage, the blade signs, is appropriate, and I think less bulky than what was there previously. I'm fine with the black, the, let's see, the black bulkheads. I do think that the mullions are a little awkward, and I think the granite cladding, it looks a little bit awkward as well.
Commissioner Jefferson?
What made this a landmark building was the muscularity of the base and the language of it, and the focus that they're using is modern and it's light. They would kind of look at what's there and bring it back to that quality, I think, of the storefront.
All right, thank you all for your comments, and thank you for a very thorough presentation. That was helpful. And I recognize you're not replacing everything right now, but there are, I think, some things that you could do that would further, and I know you're trying to sort of do incremental changes to improve the condition, but I think there are things that you can continue to re-study, and in particular, has, what has been mentioned here today is looking at exposing the transoms and rethinking the signs, looking at the inconsistencies between the two facades, and perhaps using the historic material as the model. So we won't take an action today. We'll have you re-study it. Michelle will continue to aid and guide you, and we'll have you back when you're ready. Thank you. All right, so we're going to break for lunch now. It is 12:46. We'll return at 1:15, and we'll ask all members of the public on the Zoom to voluntarily exit the Zoom meeting at this time, so that you don't experience any technical difficulties that might arise if you wish to return and we've removed you. Thank you.